Thank you. And it's recording?
We were all set to go.
Okay, I just didn't see the little recording dot. Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the Milton Select Board meeting for January 27th, 2021 already. We are conducting this meeting on Zoom in accordance with Governor Baker's executive order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, signed on March 12th, 2020, and enables us to have meetings outside of a physical location and to provide access through a remote platform such as Zoom. People can also follow on television and all that information is available on the meeting notices. So, thank you and welcome. If members would identify themselves, perhaps we could could just go around. With me on the board is Arthur Doyle, Katie Conlon, Michael Zulis, Richard Wells, whose name I think you can see there on the screen. Also, our town administrator, Mr. Michael Dennehy is with us. And our health director Caroline Kinsella, as well as our executive administrative assistant Hillary Waite. And we also are going to be joined, we already are are joined by some of our elected officials whom we will introduce a little later. And and welcome to everyone. If everyone would please join us in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America And to the republic
To the republic
For which it stands
Which it stands
One nation
Nation
Under God
Under God
Indivisible
Indivisible
With liberty
Liberty
And justice
For all.
Thank you very much. I would like to note ahead of time that our agenda item number 10, the discussion approval of select board comments to the mass housing to mass housing on the proposed 40B development at 652 Canton Avenue. The board does not have a draft letter. And so when we get to that item, we will reset the schedule. But we, it's my intention anyway, to keep with our 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 regular practice of reviewing the letter in a meeting and then having a subsequent discussion and then approval at another meeting. But I just wanted to let people know in case there was anyone here looking for that draft and looking for our discussion of it because we don't have it. And I want to let people go to their evenings if they have other things that they need to be doing. Thank you for indulging me there. The next agenda item is public comment. Thank you. So for for those of of us who are new and those who may just need a bit of a reminder. If you go to the bottom of your screen, if you're using a computer, you can find the place to raise your hand. If you're on the phone, you can press star nine to raise your hand and then it's star six to toggle on and off. And when it's your turn to speak, if you could please give us your address, we would very much appreciate it. Thank you very much. I have two and one says GB and I don't want to make any assumptions even though Mr. Dennehy told me who it might be. So if you would please give us your name, welcome and your address. Oh, you're muted now.
Thank you.
Yes.
Good evening. I'm here for the conference on the Stormwater Advisory Report.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Corcoran.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening. Ned Corcoran, 70 Morton Road, Precinct Three, and counsel to the neighborhood at 648 Canton Avenue. I wasn't going to speak because I was planning to observe your discussion on the comments to 652 and 648 Canton Avenue. But I do have a question. Perhaps you can address it when the time comes is what is the timing of the submission of your comments to mass housing, particularly with respect to the issue of substantive change that 652 renders to 648? As you may know, the Board of Appeals is scheduled to begin a hearing on March 9th on the 648 application for comprehensive permit. I have filed a motion to with the board with the Board of Appeals requesting that refer the matter back to mass housing for reconsideration of the project eligibility letter because of the what I think is a massive substantive change to the 640 application that arises from the 652 Canton Avenue application. And so I'm just wondering on behalf of my clients and in that neighborhood is is what's the timing of your process? When do you expect the comments to get to mass housing? Will you be asking mass housing to reconsider the issuance of the of the project eligibility letter for 648 as a result of the project eligibility filing for 652? I look forward to observing when that matter comes before before you. Thank you.
Thank you. Just giving people another moment in case. Doesn't it look like we have any others who would like to speak in public comment? We can move on to our next agenda item. Next is our COVID update. Oh, Mr. Dennehy? Oh, you're muted.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, I just before I introduce Caroline, who will speak to all things vaccinations, which is obviously a developing situation in our community throughout the state and and throughout the federal government. I just call with some some statistics again. We got the town got a bit of good news last Thursday. We moved out of the high-risk community for the first time in in a month exactly. We we received the positivity rate of 4.92. We are now a moderate-risk community. This is the first time the town had not been one of those high-risk communities since the week before Christmas. So we also saw some positive trends at the state level. The state positivity rate moved from 7.99 to 6.85. But there's still 222 communities in the state, about 63% of the state in the red category. So it's good news, but we still need to continue to keep the number of positive cases in our community down. I will say that we are hosting two additional COVID free COVID test dates. Welcome to anyone, don't have to be a Milton resident. It's free of charge. It's drive-through. This will be number, I believe, number nine and 10 at the Public Works Yard. It's the next two Sundays, February 7th. Sorry, not this coming Sunday, but the week after. It's February 7th and February 21st, both Sundays, 10 a.m. to 3 p.m. at Public Works Yard. So we ask people to still be diligent and mask up and continue to make sure that we're helping to stop the spread. And I'll turn it over to Health Director Caroline Kinsella. Thank you, Caroline.
Thank you, Michael. And good evening. Thank you, Madam Chair, as well as board members. And Michael's right, the COVID numbers have steadily been decreasing, which is which is great. We had 11 cases today, nine yesterday and nine the day before on Monday. So we're definitely seeing that going in the right direction. It's decreasing. And I'm hoping that we'll be continuing to go into the yellow zone for the second week in a row. It looks like it right now. So the Milton Health Department has administered 110 doses of the Moderna vaccine to police, fire, EMS, healthcare workers and nurses in five-hour clinics on Tuesdays and Wednesdays. On February 1st, residents 75 years and older are on the next step in Phase Two, listed in order of priority. At this time, we have extremely limited supply of vaccine. We're only receiving 100 doses weekly, and that's going to continue the next couple of weeks. We started a waitlist for residents 75 and older. According to Clerk Sue Galvin, we have 2,600 residents over 75 years old. We did have a hotline that I posted and I gave the hotline number to the senior housing also. And within 24 hours, we have 600 people signed up. So we're capping it right there at 600. We're pausing. And what we're going to do next is we're going to reach out to those people on the waitlist. And we're going to my staff, my health department staff and the council and aging staff are going to reach out to assist the residents in the process of registration for the vaccine in PREP mod. So that can take anywhere from 10 to 15 minutes. So we're helping people register for the vaccine. So at this time, it might take four to six weeks depending on the vaccine supply. And as I said, we're going to be reaching out to residents that we have right now on the waitlist. And we're pausing it, but then we're going to resume calling our phone numbers, our hotline numbers to get more people on the list. But residents can also find a site and they can book an appointment if they're eligible. They can go to mass.gov/covidvaccinemap or go to mass.gov and you can find that if you're eligible, you can find out what group you're in. And this link is also on the Health Department website. If you click the town of Milton website, go under the red banner and click the Health Department message. So I'm putting up a new message every week of what we're doing here in the Health Department and how it's progressing. So at this time, the state's directing residents to vaccinate at mass vaccination sites like Gillette, Fenway Park, larger sites that they can throughput 1,000 people at a time. So it's going to take a little bit of time for us to get the vaccine here in Milton. But when we do, we'll be scheduled in the clinics and reaching out to residents. And I just wanted to touch a little bit on the budget, too. So Michael had asked me to come up with a COVID vaccine projection budget, which I'm still working with Lisa Cool on that budget. We are vaccinating twice a week on Tuesdays and Wednesdays, and we're moving our operation to the Council on Aging as we get more vaccines. So we're going to be doing that this week, moving it to the Council on Aging. You know, the the budget, I'm working with Lisa Cool, the financial analyst, and she's been wonderful. The budget is fluid. I'm going to be working with Lisa tomorrow at 9 o'clock because we're trying to figure out, you know, how much staff we're going to need, how many nurses, how many staff on PREP mod to enter the vaccine information at the same time. And then police and fire and how much it's going to cost. So we can run two weeks, two clinics on Tuesday and Wednesday. I'm hoping to do one or two clinics on a Saturday. And you know, trying to schedule about 40 clinics here is in our projection. The difficult part, too, is we're giving the first dose and then people come back for the second dose. So we're hoping to try to gauge how many people that we can give the vaccine to as we get more vaccine and how much it's going to cost to have more nurses and staff there at the clinics. So we're going to work on this this week and present that to you by next week. So that's in motion right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Caroline. Yes.
Madam Chair, if I might, Caroline, could you just explain the process and how manually laborous it is to to administer the vaccination, just so people understand what it what it involves and why it can sometimes take so much time to administer one vaccine?
Yes. Thank you, Michael. Yeah, so the state rolled out this PREP mod program the same week they they rolled out the vaccines. So first of all, first of all, we didn't get any real training on it and we're still learning about this PREP mod vaccine program. So people are going to come and they're going to register ahead of time. We're hoping we're going to help them register. And it'll take 10 or 15 minutes to register either through a link or with us. And when they come before us at the clinic, we are in real time bringing up the information on PREP mod, going through 11 questions that we need to have answered. And a nurse will be given the vaccine. So we're going to have a nurse in tandem with a staff member on PREP mod to administer the vaccine. So we might be setting up four or five stations to give the vaccine and then people have to wait 15 to 30 minutes afterwards. And we're going to be monitoring them. We have Chief Madden has provided some EMTs to monitor people after the vaccine. So we're going to have to see how long it's going to take to maybe 10 minutes to have someone come in front of us, will enter all the information, then they're going to sit down for another 15 minutes and how how much time it's going to take to throughput them and and see how that goes. So, you know, it's a learning process. We're going to have most of this budget money is going to be for staff and nurses to assist with distribution of the vaccine. And I also see there's going to be a number of nurses that are going to have to go out into the community to give it to homebound residents. So it's going to be quite a process. We're going to be learning as we're going along. But yeah, it's a process. We're going to have to see.
Thank you so much for that background. Do do members have any questions or comments? Yes, Mr. Wells.
Can you hear me? So I'm having a sound problem tonight. Sorry, Madam Chair.
No, no, we can hear you.
So two questions for Caroline. One, where are we on first responders? How many do we have left? I touched base with Chief King the other day. And two, I know Fallon is probably the largest dispenser, who is our provider in the state. I do believe it's within their capability to go out and to seniors, see any residents home, they can't get in and actually deliver, they administer the vaccine right there. I think that's definitely something you want to have conversation with Fallon about. It just takes a lot off your plate.
Absolutely. I will, I will talk to Fallon. And I'm sorry, what was your first question?
How many first responders are left to be vaccinated?
You know, we've, we've taken care of a lot of the first responders for the fire and police in Milton. And we're going to be administering the second doses next week or the week after next. So we're going to be sending out emails for the second doses. So we, we pretty much process them.
Everyone on the first dose?
Yeah, almost.
Okay. Thank you for that. The one thing I will tell you about PREP mod that will make your life easier, if they're pre-registered, it'll definitely make your your life a lot easier for those that are, I know seniors, you definitely taking a progressive step in because seniors registering will take some time if you can do that further. But people who commit to registered, I think that that's where you get your your ease will be, the more they register, the easier it'll be for staff administration.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Dennehy?
One closing thought. I did hear on the radio tonight that obviously they're going to open up Fenway Park and some of these larger venues. The operational expert there and his name escapes me, talked about them starting with 300 because of the same thing that Ms. Kinsella talked about, the fact that you have to ramp this up and learn the process. But I think Fenway Park is going to start with 300 a day and then try to ramp itself up to 1250 once they get the process a little more seamless. And that's what I see coming from Caroline's operation. So we should be up and running next week and hopefully we can keep the doses coming and and help the the senior population register through PREP mode and and have everybody in and through the door much more efficiently each week.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you very much, Director Kinsella. We really appreciate you, your staff's efforts and 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 thank you to Lisa Cool as well for helping you with those estimates. It's very important that you get the resources you need.
Yeah, and thank you to the Council on Aging, too. Christine Stanton and her staff, they've been wonderful and they're going to help out, too.
That's wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you. Take care.
So thank you to our legislators for being so patient and waiting and for joining us this evening. Welcome, Senator Timulty and Representative Driscoll and now Representative Fluker Oakley. I was lucky enough to to meet her a little earlier today in a meeting and it's delightful to have you you all here. We we congratulate the Senator and Rep. Driscoll on your reelections and and Representative Fluker Oakley on on your your new election here. So thank you for coming to Milton. And Senator Timulty, I'd like to invite you to to say a few words to us. First, I know our residents are very eager to hear from all of you.
Well, thank you very much, Madam Chair. And right off the bat, congratulations to Representative Fluker Oakley. Congrats, Representative. We're looking forward to working with you in the months with Rep. Driscoll and yourself. You are now part of the Milton delegation. So we're very proud to have you. We're very proud to have you. And thank you very much to Mr. Dennehy for having us tonight. And I'm so very impressed with Mrs. Kinsella each and every time I witness what she does for us battling this pandemic, battling substance use disorder and doing so much for us. So I thought it was great to lead off with Mrs. Kinsella tonight. Yeah, I guess in the here and now, first and foremost, tomorrow, we will be voting on a climate change bill, which Rep. Driscoll and I voted for back in December. A conference committee reported landmark legislation. We will be taking it up tomorrow. Governor Baker did offer a veto towards the end of the session because of constitutional parameters with the calendar, we were not able to address the veto. But we will be taking it up in both the House and Senate tomorrow. And I am confident that we will be passing the bill in both chambers and sending it back to the governor. So just in the here and now, of course. Now, obviously, we have a lot of pressing issues here on the home front and we are committed as a delegation. I know I'm confident speaking for Rep. Driscoll and Rep. Fluker Oakley, we are confident in being the partners that the town of Milton and the citizens of Milton so richly deserve and working for you folks. We will never forget that we work for you, the residents of the town of Milton, and of course, for this board. So I thank you for what you do. I just spoke with our Ways and Means Chair in the State Senate. Obviously, Governor Baker released his budget today. Now, the budget, of course, I'm partial because I serve in the state legislature, but I look upon the budget as a legislative function. You know, the governor today, of course, his numbers were $9,567,275, which is an increase of $130,200,000 for Milton in Chapter 70 over FY21. And in terms of local aid for the town of Milton, $3,411,993, which is an increase of $119,420 over the General Appropriations Act of FY21. So those numbers are preliminary. They are the, they are the governor's. I have a commitment from the Ways and Means Chair in the State Senate that local aid will be a minimum of 3.5% for our communities increase. And obviously, it's something that the House and Senate will work on together. And your Milton delegation, I'm confident, will be advocating for every dollar for this town. That's obviously first and foremost. Also, I believe that we will be addressing the budget in late April and, of course, in the House of Representatives, I would never want to speak for Rep. Fluker Oakley and Rep. Driscoll. But in the State Senate, we will be addressing the budget in late May. I was just assured of that. Last year, of course, the budget was moved back because of, we just didn't have a stable revenue figure with the free fall the economy was in beginning last March. Revenue figures have improved somewhat, certainly over what we were dealing with in those of the pandemic in mid-spring. But we will be addressing the budget in the State Senate in late May. And obviously, I trust that the House will be doing similar great work prior to us. Now, in terms of priorities, number one priority right now, of course, and we're going to be very candid, as I hope I always am, the Baker-Polito administration's rollout of the vaccination program has been nothing short of not being ready. Let's put it that way. I could use another word and that would probably be disastrous thus far. I believe it's about to start ramping up, but in conjunction with Rep. Fluker Oakley and Rep. Driscoll, my number one priority is to continue to advocate with the Baker-Polito administration to make sure that there's a rapid increase in vaccinations. And that's, of course, number one priority. Budget is always key. I am very proud of the work that I and we have done with Milton Substance Use Disorder Coalition, led by Ms. Stillman and Mrs. Kinsella. And beyond that, we have bill filing. We're in the midst of bill filing, which is at the onset of every legislative session. It will go well into February. So any suggestions, ideas, thoughts, please pass them along. I will never forget that I work for you folks and the citizens of this town and we certainly will incorporate them into legislative proposals. So with that, I thank you very much and I'm sure I've talked too much. But I welcome this opportunity to be with you all here tonight.
Thank you so much, Senator. We very much appreciate just your taking the time and for for giving your priorities and a little highlight on what's to come on the budget.
If I may, Madam Chair, one other thing. For the past year, I've been, well, since last summer, I've been the co-chair of the Special Oversight Committee investigating the tragedy that is the Holyoke Soldier Home. We've now had in excess of five hearings that myself and my co-chair have chaired. It's a joint House-Senate committee, of course. And obviously, what has happened in Holyoke is an unspeakable tragedy of epic proportions. We are committed to finding answers that are both accurate and truthful, that will enable the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to make sure that this tragedy never happens again. The report is due, that we will offer up prior to March 31st of 2021. It will be presented to the Baker administration. Health and Human Services has oversight over the Holyoke Soldier Home and the Chelsea Soldier Home. So obviously, that is very important to myself and every member of the great general court and obviously is a big priority. So thank you all very much.
Yes, thank you for that update. It is very, very important. And hello, Rep. Driscoll. Welcome and and thank you for joining us. And we're, as I said, with Senator Timulty and I will say to Representative Fluker Oakley, residents are always happy to hear from you and can't get enough opportunities. So welcome. We'd love to hear what your priorities are for this year as well.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and to the rest of the select board members. It's always a pleasure to be with you. Appreciate all the work that you've put in, particularly in this last year. I know, like everyone, there's been a lot of trying moments and as we've all adapted and and found this new normal. And I don't think anyone can say that they're well-rested at this point unless they're coming off a six-week vacation or something. I know I've talked to a lot of folks every day, constituents and friends and family, and people are just tired and it's understandable. And I know that, you know, just in terms of local issues that you, you again are doing the people's work here at the local level and we really appreciate that and and working in partnership with you throughout this new this new session. So it's been, it's an honor to be reelected and continue to represent most of the town of Milton and the House side. And I've got a new teammate with Rep. Fluker Oakley. So again, congratulations, Rep. And congratulations to you, Senator, for your reelection in this last November. Chair, to your question, a couple of things, you know, from last last session that I think are Chair, to your question, a couple of things, you know, from last last session that I think are worth mentioning. I appreciate the Senator's updates, so I won't be redundant on that. We were able to secure through some of the bonding bills, a couple of authorizations that I think are relevant in, you know, in the coming years to Milton if we can convince the Baker administration or future administration to to work with us to release the funds. You know, the way I like to couch kind of a bond authorization is that it's step five of ten, so to speak, and getting to actually realizing shovel in the ground on projects. But for improvements to the one thirty eight corridor, which I know is important to Rep. Fluker Oakley as we share constituencies, depending upon which side of the road you live on there on one thirty eight. We received a twelve million dollar authorization for future improvements, you know, as informed by the priority corridor study that was done a few years ago, as well as a ten million dollar authorization to connect the Milton MBTA stop, the Metapan High Speed Line stop, to Houghton's Pond Recreation Area via a multi-use path. So again, these are not projects that are ready to fly. I don't want to misrepresent them, but they, we do have an authorization from the legislature to, you know, directive to 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 the governor and to mass thought around. These are projects we'd like to see happen, particularly the one thirty eight improvements. And today, I know we were joined by many of you on the updates to the twenty eight corridor study. So it was good to get a preliminary look at what they've been talking about and how we might improve safety and and transit on those corridors in the future. I certainly have heard a lot from residents in the last week, week plus, around the vaccine distribution issue. So I echo Senator Timmelti's statement around continuing to advocate and pressure really the Baker administration to increase the distribution. You know, it's one thing to have a supply issue. It's another thing in terms of trying to ramp up and execute the plan. It's very complicated. I, you know, I will completely, you know, concede that it's, I think it's important for folks to realize if you can, if you're, when you're eligible, if you can make an appointment, or if you need assistance to do it how you normally would in terms of, if you're old, if you're an older adult, maybe a family friend that helps you book those, to really lean on them at this point because the system is going to take time to catch up, is what we're hearing. And I'll be on a call tomorrow with the COVID Command Center and Secretary Mary Lou Sutter's on the vaccine issue. So I'm sure I'll have more updates after that call. You know, the return to in-person schooling, again, is something I hear a lot from constituents. And we're looking, obviously, supporting the town and the school committee and the schools in any way we can from the state level and starting to look ahead, you know, from a legislative standpoint as we do approach the budget and as we do approach this new session at, you know, how do we get to the point where guaranteed we have in-person schooling next fall? You know, we can continue to try and gain ground now and in the future months for this school year, but what steps can we take to to make sure that we have folks, you know, students, staff, in person and on time next fall? It's going to be one of my priorities, talking with the new Speaker of the House, Speaker Mariano, who's one of our neighbor neighboring reps in Quincy, which is always helpful to have a regional connection. Looking forward to voting on the climate change bill that Senator Timmelti referenced. So whether we'll have to vote for it one more time or two more times, we'll have to see when we send it to the governor. But anticipating we'll be voting on it tomorrow. And I'll be filing an update to the bill that I was championing last year around carbon pricing and continuing to try and decarbonize, you know, our economy and 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 how we emit, you know, trying to continue to drive toward that goal of net zero emissions by twenty fifty. And I'm sure you'll hear more from me on that on that bill in the future. But we looked at a pretty close to final draft yesterday, so I'm excited about the updates there and what that could mean in terms of if we did put a price on carbon, that would bring dollars to Milton and to other municipalities around the state for different infrastructure projects focused on on clean energy and a cleaner future. I will stop there because I I know that the star of the show is following me, so I appreciate the Madam Chair. You let me go before our new representative from Milton and everyone's eager to hear from Rep. Fluker Oakley.
Thank you, Rep. Driscoll. Yes, well, I, 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 all I think I might say, save the best for last because it's always good to give the newest person a little more time and not feel pressured to have our more senior members go be behind you. So so thank you so much, first of all, Representative Fluker Oakley, for for joining us and and for running as well because our precincts, one and two, while they were very, very well served by Dan Collinane, I I know that they're they're going to love you and be very happy to 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 have your particular set of skills and viewpoints and 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 a new person to to interact with and be represented by. So thank you so much. And please share with us your priorities and things that are on your mind. We're here to listen. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair, for for having me to the entire select board. Thank you, Mr. Dennehy, for extending this invitation. Senator Timmelti, I really appreciate your warm welcome and congratulations. Same to you as well, Rep. Driscoll. And I'm excited and humbled to be a part of the Milton delegation and to serve and represent as well. Very briefly, what you'll learn about me is I'm actually a woman of few words, so I don't know if I'll have a lot to share at this juncture. My legislative staffer is also or was on the call, still here, Chris Westfall. And I just name him because if there's anything you ever need from our office, do not hesitate to reach out. We are absolutely available and want to be able to serve and help out. No question is too small. I also just want to thank folks who have already been reaching out to my office on advocacy concerns. We've already heard from Senator Timmelti and Rep. Driscoll about the vaccination and how that is rolling out. I did receive a communication from a small business owner of a funeral home, both on the Milton side and the Boston side of my district, wanting the funeral professional staff to be given a higher priority in the vaccine distribution, which I did sign on to a letter to do that because I think they're just as essential, particularly given the death rates we've seen from this disease. While the governor has yet to budge on that, I just want to make it very clear to the town of Milton that to the extent that I can be an advocate in getting professionals access to the vaccine sooner, especially as this administration ramps up their rollout, please know that that is my top priority. And as Senator Timmelti and Rep. Driscoll mentioned, I'll be voting on my first bill tomorrow, so I'm excited about that. Very much do support climate change issues, so you can expect a favorable vote for me there, similar to how both Rep. Driscoll and Senator Timmelti voted in the previous session. And I was given a huge reprieve this year where they actually pushed back the filing deadline, which I don't think has happened in anybody's recent memory. And so Chris and I have been very diligent in taking our time to speak with community members and advocates. Some of the issues that I ran on related to transportation, housing, taking care of our seniors and the environment. And so we've been doing our due diligence and making sure that whatever bills I file or co-sponsor align to that. And since we still have a few more weeks before bills are due, if there are any issue areas that residents are most concerned about that are top of mind, please don't hesitate to reach out so I can figure out how to be a partner and an advocate for you. And I think I'll stop there, Madam Chair, unless there are specific questions. And I just look forward to working with each of you and hopefully, meeting you in person when it's safe to do so.
Thank you very much, Representative. Would members care to ask questions or say a few words to our wonderful representatives and our senator?
I would.
Yes, Ms. Conlin?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to Senator Timmelti and Representative Driscoll and Representative Fluker Oakley. Welcome, Representative Fluker Oakley. Nice to be working with you. I just wanted to mention that in addition to any and all help that you can give us regarding the vaccine supply and distribution to Milton and I'm sure our neighboring communities, which is a very high priority. The other issue is just the budget. We received the cherry sheets today with the governor's budget and the Chapter Seventy amount is lower than what we were expecting because we were under the impression that the full first year of the Student Opportunity Act would be funded. And there's a little bit of clarity that I think we're still seeking in terms of whether that's actually included in the Chapter Seventy number or not. It was pretty significantly lower than what we and the town administration and I think the school administration had anticipated. So as we go through the process, additional Chapter Seventy aid and student opportunity aid would be helpful with whatever you can. And of course, any other local aid components, we're happy to see an increase there as well. But particularly in the education aid, if there's more help that you can give us as we go through the House and Senate process, I know that would be very appreciated both by by this board and the town administrator and the school administration and the school committee. So thank you all.
Yes, Mr. Wells. You're muted. You're still muted, Mr. Wells.
Sorry, I'm trying, Madam Chair. As I said, for some reason, I haven't sound difficult tonight. Thank you, Senator Timmelti, Senator Rep. Driscoll. Just my two questions to reelectors before I talk to the newest member of the Honorable Court. Is, in what you saw in the governor's budget today, is this better than what you would have anticipated six months ago or worse?
Well, I would say that, given the fact that we were in the throes of a pandemic-induced recession six months ago, it's it's better than what I would have anticipated six months ago. However, that being said, the governor's budget is a pulpit, to be sure, for His Excellency, but the budget is a legislative function. So, you know, if I may, Mr. Wells, answer Ms. Conlin's question. In the same, but no, I think the questions intertwine rather nicely. I am optimistic, well, first of all, I'm not saying anything that is unique. I know Rep. Fluker Oakley, Rep. Driscoll and I are going to be fighting for every possible dollar we can to be poured into Chapter Seventy and into local aid. Those two accounts, line items, are the lifeblood of communities all across the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So in the end, the governor has an opportunity to posture and it's obviously a very serious exercise when the governor puts out his budget and it's certainly a baseline. But there are many months ahead. What will be important in the months ahead are what the revenue collections are from DOR. That's how we project the health of our economy and it also is how we anticipate what we can spend in the General Appropriations Act for FY twenty two and beyond. I think it's also going to be important to see what we receive in terms of monies, if any, from the federal government. You obviously have a new Congress and a new presidency. And President Biden is talking about a relief package in upwards of two trillion dollars, which, of course, is a lot of money, but it would also mean a lot of money for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts in terms of relief. So there are a lot of variables right now, but what you're seeing today from Governor Baker is obviously a serious exercise and an important exercise. But it's the first step of many steps in the budget process for the Commonwealth of Mass that will culminate at some point around July first, when the new fiscal year begins.
Very good. Thank you.
Yeah, and if I could just answer to to Select Board Member Wells' question. Yeah, the document itself came out today, so to give you a Governor Baker answer, you know, take some time to take a look at it before we comment too much on it. But I will say, the number in terms of local aid was what we, what I expected to see, having talked to colleagues in terms of the three point five percent range increase. So I'm glad that that held true and they indicated as such last week, the administration. I think one of the places for discussion is around the rainy day fund. So the governor in his proposal does utilize quite a bit of money from the rainy day fund, from what I've read so far. And again, that's that's a real question because I think to your first part of your question, I do think we expected to be in a worse, worse spot than we are currently. So there's, I mean, that's good news that we're not there. The thing that I kept telling folks last spring was, it's not this budget, it's the next budget. So we're now in that next budget season. And I think there'll be a lot of discussion around around use of the rainy day fund because it's, if we have it, we can certainly use it if we need to, but it also affects debt service and other things going forward and can end up costing us money in the long run. So I think there's a kind of a large conversation to have there. And and certainly, we heard from folks this past year around, you know, frankly, underfunding the school line item budgets after we passed the the Student Opportunity Act. I mean, it's completely understandable from the standpoint of we're in the pandemic era, but obviously, we want to try and reach those those goals set and the statute that we set when we pass it as soon as we can. So to Senator Timmelti's point, there's a lot of attention being paid right now to see what the federal aid will look like. And like I talked about, the the absolute, you know, fallback goal of trying to get folks in person and on time into schools next fall. You know, a lot of that's going to depend on can we fully utilize that federal money to do that effort. And again, it falls back to vaccines. If the supply shows up over the summer that they ordered, that the president ordered and the federal government ordered yesterday, another two hundred million doses, how quickly can we do that so that we can safely enter the fall in the colder weather?
Thank you. And to our newest colleague, it was just over a year ago that I took a call from our friend, mutual friend, Senator Nick Collins, who asked me if I would meet a young lady who was interested in running for state representative to fill the shoes of Rep. Dan Collinane. You know that we've talked and worked a lot this time. You rolled up your sleeve. You worked very hard to win this seat. And since you've been there for my colleagues who are here tonight, you've already attuned yourselves to some of the issues we're dealing with in town, especially some of the new affordable housing projects that lie within your district. You you you'd be, you're walking in big shoes following Linda Dossina-Forey, Dan Collinane. And and while I live in Milton, my father was OFD and gave me all of his Dorchester roots. And you will serve this, the General Court, very well. So I'm not going to ask any questions. Just want to welcome you and congratulations. Enjoy the honeymoon. It's not going to last long.
Thank you, Select Board Wells. I appreciate that.
Mr. Driscoll's laughing. He had a longer honeymoon than you did. Thank you all for coming in tonight.
Mr. Doyle?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to thank all three of our legislators for their past, current and future advocacy on behalf of the citizens of Milton. And I would like to express to them a concern that has been raised with me today by some of those citizens and is with respect, of course, to the vaccine, the limited supply that's available to Massachusetts and need to have that redressed when they see what's going on in some other states that are far ahead of our Commonwealth in this respect, which is not really a typical hallmark of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. The two things that they have brought to my attention, and some of them reported going on to the state site before four o'clock this morning, are that they have difficulty with use, that it is a little bit awkward in that it does not provide clear direction to how to register for the vaccine. It gives a ton of information and they'd like to have the site inverted. We're calling in, we're going into the site to register. Yes, provide the information, but do the registration process upfront. And the second, of course, is the lack of availability that I cited earlier. They've been telling me that they've been going on site after site after site and what's been coming up is not available. So I just wanted to pass those along to you, reinforcing some of the comments that you've already received. I know it's on your homework tablets right now and we wish you the very best in pursuing this on behalf of everybody.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may, and jump in for a moment, please?
Of course, Senator.
Thank you. And Mr. Doyle, thank you very much for the question. Please say hello to my friend Katie and my friend Susan back on the home front. Two problems, obviously. Number one, the Trump administration in the procurement process underbought vaccination doses, didn't procure enough. And the second part of the problem, which Rep. Fluker Oakley, Rep. Driscoll and I can all attest to, the Baker administration- the Baker administration simply wasn't ready, wasn't ready and isn't ready yet in terms of setting up the infrastructure to administer the doses in a rapid fashion and really to administer doses to masses of people rapidly. And obviously, that's a drag on our economy. It's a drag on our educational system, to say the least. So those, I believe, that is what has engendered the crisis that we still face in terms of combating this pandemic when we do have the vaccination that's ready. I will say for anybody who is out there in the general public who is having difficulties navigating the process, please reach out to my office. And I know Rep Fluker Oakley and Rep Driscoll are thinking the same thing, but please reach out. My email address is Walter.Timeltie@MASenate.gov. And myself and my staff are more than happy to help you, any person, navigate their way through the process and help you as best we can. And beyond that, on Friday, you know, Rep Driscoll, you raised a great point. On Friday, we'll be on a conference call with Secretary Sutter's and we will be asking questions. I've already compiled the questions that I want to ask of Secretary Sutter's regarding the public health crisis that we face and what the Baker administration is doing to combat it and stop the spread. If anybody has a question that they would like to be offered, I will embrace it as my own. So please never hesitate to reach out. And thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator. Um, yes, Mr. Dennehy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't want to tie up any more time from these very busy legislatures, but it's very comforting. You were on a call with me today, Route twenty-eight corridor, which is a priority. It was a priority of the Traffic Mitigation Committee. It's been a priority in this town for longer than the Traffic Mitigation Committee was was established. On that call today, all three of our legislators and staffers. So it's very important. It's great to see them here. I want to welcome Rep Fluker Oakley and congratulate Rep Driscoll and Senator Timmeltie on reelection. Rep Fluker Oakley, my door is an open door. I run the day-to-day operations. Again, like you said, there's no issue too small. Street light out, pothole, street not plowed, anything you get, Rep Driscoll and Rep Timmeltie can attest, it's a great two-way street. I work with this this board and you. Again, and there's no issue too small when it comes to the constituency. So welcome to you. Congratulations to our reelection campaigns. And I want to thank everyone for being here tonight and let you know that you're always welcome guests here at the select board meeting. Thank you for everything you do for our community.
Thank you, Mr. Dennehy. Yes, Mr. Driscoll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Dennehy. To Senator Timmeltie's point too, I do think it's worth mentioning in terms of reaching out to your local state rep or senator. Again, just kind of information to put out to the viewers, folks that are watching. If if you do end up separated from a job, have to go for unemployment assistance. If you're working with, if you're seeking assistance from other state agencies, our offices are always open for you. We can try and escalate cases. I know, you know, if you've if you've unfortunately experienced job separation recently, you know that it's taking a long time, weeks and weeks in some cases, to get regular unemployment or the pandemic unemployment. But we do have connection points at the State House with the administration and the different offices like Department of Employment Assistance. I just mentioned that again in case someone watching, you know, has a friend or family member that is wondering what what the heck is going on with their claim or their delayed claim. Again, we can't promise to fix it on the spot, but we can escalate escalate those cases as they come in.
Thank you, Rep Driscoll. Senator Timmeltie, did you?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Well, first of all, this has been a privilege tonight to be here in the board. We always work together. Usually it's phone calls or emails, so it's great to be here on Zoom, which is as close as up close and personal we get these days. So thank you very much for the invitation to you, Madam Chair, and to you, Mr. Dennehy and all the members of the board. I think it's very important, obviously, that we stick together. This town and this country, if it sticks together, can overcome anything. We are getting there and meetings such as this make us better at what we at what we do as legislators. So I thank you for that. Mr. Dennehy, thank you very much. I've now, at my request, DOTs convened two meetings regarding Route one thirty-eight and its refurbishment. And Mr. Dennehy and Mr. Chase Berkeley have been wonderful advocates for the town, bringing their great technical expertise and their passion for public works. You can never forget that Mr. Dennehy was a Public Works Commissioner at one time. And as you told me yesterday, you're only as good as your last snowstorm, right, Mike? Yeah, so I thank you all very much and look forward to working for you all and for the town in the years to come. And I thank this town very much for the privilege of working for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator, and thank you, representatives. We know that you've been working hard all day and every day, actually, seven days a week. So thank you for joining us and for all that you're you're doing and will do. And the best of health as you try to make your way through the rest of the pandemic and and work for all of us. And that goes not just for people in Milton, but for all our neighbors that you represent in other towns.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You. Good night.
Thank you. Good night.
So now we're on to the Finance Committee report on the F Y twenty twenty-two budget. So that was well timed discussion. I bet when Mr. Dennehy scheduled our senators and representatives, he didn't realize how timely that that was going to be on those two fronts, vaccine and budget.
It worked out well, Madam Chair. Vice Chair, Vice Chair Conlon, would you like me to introduce this and we can get into the discussion of?
Yeah, actually, I thought I might just introduce it and ask you to speak to some of the particulars in the budget.
Sure.
Mr. Dennehy, if that works, and Mr. Zulus. So the Finance Committee met yesterday morning, Mr. Zulus, Mr. Dennehy and I, and started reviewing the spreadsheet that the town administrator and our, for lack of a better term, I guess, our interim town accountant Barbara Costa have been working on. And, you know, this process has been going on despite the fact that the town accountant, Amy Dexter, is now in a new role with the school administration. So despite all the transition in that office, I think we're making progress and and we are where we probably need to be at this stage. Just briefly, for the rest of the board, when we met yesterday, the projected shortfall that we're looking at for F Y twenty-two is about 1.2 million dollars. But at that point, we didn't have these numbers on the cherry sheet. We had an inclination of what the the increase, the three point five percent increase in unrestricted general government aid would be. And we had heard that the governor was going to fully fund chapter seventy in the first year for the Student Opportunity Act. But we, the numbers that came out today, as I mentioned, are it's a $130,000 increase in that line, but different than what we had been anticipating. So I think we need to get some further clarification from the school administration and and maybe from our electeds on that. But whenever we are in this stage in January and as we work through February and March and get the warrant ready for the annual town meeting, there's always a process of starting with a shortfall and working it through to get to a balanced budget. So that process is ongoing. On the expenditure side, maybe Mr. Dennehy will speak a little more to this, but we have some projected increases in the health budget and in the group insurance budget in particular. And on the revenue side, maybe I'll ask Mr. Dennehy to speak to some of the specifics, but we're looking at, you know, a smaller increase in new growth than in the prior year. We're taking a conservative approach on some of the numbers from the treasurer on the excise tax, as well as the building commissioners permit fees income. And we'll really, we're at the early stage of the process. The Mr. Dennehy will be presenting to the warrant committee and will be meeting with the school finance committee. We've scheduled a meeting for our own finance committee for next Wednesday, I believe, the third.
Correct.
And we have posted for the full board in case anyone else would like to join us. And that's really where we're at. We're at the start of the process. We have a shortfall to close and we'll be refining the numbers as we go along. Mr. Dennehy or Mr. Zulus, would you want to fill in some, maybe Mike could fill in, fill in some of the details and Mr. Zulus may have some thoughts.
Excellent. Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Yeah, a very productive meeting yesterday with the with the Finance Subcommittee. I have to thank Barbara Costa, Lisa Cool, everyone in the accounting office. Amy Dexter left them a very good spreadsheet of of a snapshot of of F Y twenty-two. One of the, one of the important things I think I heard from our state legislators tonight, which is comforting to me, is that they're going to pick up the ball and meet like they normally do. Obviously, last year was was extraordinary and and we didn't receive our final numbers till late November, early December, which worked out well for the town. We were able to put three quarters of our stabilization money back, put some more money in the reserve fund in case COVID continued, and it did. So great job by this board, the warrant committee and town meeting to address those issues. We did. We took a similar approach to this year. Under the guidance of this board, we we met with the department heads and asked them to pass on to their board or committee or trustees and just put together a level funded budget. Last year, we did level funded minus three. That minus three didn't really work well for some of the smaller budgets. When you face a three percent cut in some of the offices, like the treasurer's office or the clerk's office, that three percent, it really cuts into your personnel line. So this year, rather than do that, the directive was a level funded budget, which includes contractual obligations and collective bargaining agreements. And then, as many of you recall, on the floor of remote town meeting, if you will, the floor of, a lot of people raised the point that the Health Department could use some supplementary help, obviously, in the middle of a pandemic. So Health Director Cancela presented to the Personnel Board on January eleventh and they approved the hiring or the posting to hire an assistant health director come fiscal twenty-two. So that's good news. It's it is about a $75,000 expenditure. It's a benefit eligible position that would be a member of the managers' union, but certainly a position in need as we we saw Director Cancela tonight trying to juggle COVID testing and vaccination and and just the regular day-to-day operational stuff that her office does so well. So one of the other outliers this year, which which will make sense if you let me walk through it, is is group insurance. So group insurance is is always a concern. This board understood that and addressed it last year with a healthcare redesign. In addition to that healthcare redesign, we saw our insurance rates uptick five percent last year. After meeting with Cook and Company several times this winter, it looked like that five percent number was going to hold true going forward. And then they received some quotes back from the insurance providers. What's happening this year is a lot of elective surgeries that would have taken place last year were postponed. Most due to COVID, where the hospitals either wouldn't see you or some people decided they didn't want to be in the hospital. That number is a real number for F Y two twenty-two heading forward, excuse me, to the tune of approximately another five percent. So what we're looking at is an additional 10% at this time added to our group insurance costs for the year. And that is a real number. That's approximately 1.3 million dollars more than was budgeted last year. Having said that, Paige Appolito, our HR Director and Human Resources Assistant Town Administrator, has been working with the group and they've identified some savings from this year due to people not using the hospitals and some of their healthcare as necessary. So there will be a savings that that should net out from that, which will most likely fall to free cash. And we'll work through that as the details come through. But there will be some savings in in F Y twenty-one, but will certainly impact the budget in in twenty-two. On the revenue side, as Madam Vice Chair said, had lots of conversations with the Chief Appraiser, Bob Bushway, our town treasurer, Jim McCullough, and our building commissioner, Joe Frondack, as well as our Public Works Director, Chase Berkeley. So the long and short of it is last year, the Board of Assessors and Chief of Assess, Chief of Appraiser, Bob Bushway estimated growth at just over $962,000. This year, they scaled that back to about $600,000. But they've actually moved that needle up to $650,000. So we appreciate the $50,000, but understand the growth is not where it was last year. So we'll have to work through that lower revenue number. We have the Lieutenant Governor's Report of three point five percent of unrestricted general government aid, which helps, and that's to the tune of $119,000. And then the governor's announcement today. I had a quick email back and forth with school administration. They're going to look into that further this week to find out if the Student Opportunity Act money is in there. As Madam Vice Chair said, that it was a substantial amount lower than they had anticipated being in there. Just briefly, the building commissioner, that office is as busy as ever, as you can understand. A lot of people being home a lot are doing some home repairs, expansions, conversions, stuff like that. He anticipates collecting more in revenue this year than he had anticipated and running on average what he had done in the last two fiscal years, which is about 1.2 million dollars. He wants to be a little bit conservative and carve $100,000 off that and would like to budget 1.1 million dollars in there, understanding that COVID is still in our community and it may have an impact on on work being done from from a permitting aspect. And then just to touch very quickly upon what Madam Vice Chair said, the treasurer has has taken a cautious approach. He's not necessarily using the the multiple year average when when budgeting for excise tax and tax and investment income. So there'll be some trimmings there. But the long and short of it is, again, as Madam Vice Chair said, this is the beginning of the process. I'm very enthusiastic that our legislatures are going to get to this in a timely fashion and that they are going to work with the governor's budget and work from the governor's budget. That that's good news. But as we've done in the last three years, I think the meeting of the subcommittees of the School Committee and this board, the Finance Committees ultimately gets us to where we are. We are unbalanced at this time and we do have a deficit to Madam Vice Chair's point earlier. But I think as a group collectively, we'll continue to be conservative and and we'll come up with a nice balanced budget for for town meeting in May.
Thank you. Do any members have questions or comments? Well, thank you. Yes, Mr. Zulus.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just say, just at the risk of repeating anything, this is a very conservative preliminary cut budget. As has been pointed out, that has served us well over the last few years as we go through the process. The the big numbers so far are the the deficit amount, which is 1.2 million dollars, which again is is better than where we've started in prior years. We have free cash of $681,000. So to the extent we have one time, one time, one time items, we may be able to do some work there. And then the main drivers of the budget are really, as Mike pointed out, the the insurance, which the increase there was 1.2 million dollars, about 10%. And the schools, which, you know, we penciled in an increase of 2.5 million dollars, which is about 4.8%. Gives the schools at least the initial part of the additional additional positions that they're seeking. So those are the main drivers. And I and I think, you know, given the fact that we do have some free cash and if if that student opportunity money comes through, then, you know, this exercise should should get us to where we need to be.
Thank you, Mr. Zulus. Yes, Mr. Dennehy.
If I could just add one, and and again, this is this is version ten of probably version four hundred and ninety of the budget as we work through the process. But we did receive some news from Blue Hill Regional Technical High School after the governor's report came out. And the preliminary number that that they're forwarding over to us is a 16.3% increase over last year. It's a little higher than than we all had anticipated. But we we also have to understand correspondingly, there's 16.2% more Milton students using the school. So it's not a direct relation, but the enrollment at Blue Hills Regional Technical High School for Milton students in October of 2019 was 37. That jumped to 43 this past October. So embedded in that are the renovation assessments that town meeting approved as a part of the $85 million upgrade to that wonderful building in Canton that so many Milton students use. So So, we'll be adjusting the spreadsheet tomorrow, Barbara and myself, now that the cherry reports are here. And we really look forward to the House One and Senate budgets as they come through. Hopefully, we get some good news on those. But I want to thank both members of the Finance Committee. It was a constructive discussion yesterday. Some of the items that I may have forgotten, they brought to my attention, and we'll continue to refine the budget and make a similar presentation to the Warren Committee, preliminary and unbalanced, albeit, but give them a taste of where we are with the '22 budget so far.
Thank you, Mr. Dennehy. And hello, Mr. Burke. Thank you for joining us.
Good evening.
Good evening. And Mr. Berkeley, thank you for joining us as well. We're now on to seven, our Stormwater Advisory Committee. So, I don't know if, Mr. Berkeley, you would like to start this? Or Mr. Dennehy? I know all three of you are the committee, so.
If I may, Madam Chair, Chase, I'd like your background there for a second. Yeah, I didn't see too many palm trees out last night when you were plowing snow all night. But no, first and foremost, thanks to Chase and his group and quality facilities, and all the operational groups that were out there. I think a phone call to our weather service provider is necessary because this was not what was forecasted. And I think we ended up with the most amount of snow in Norfolk County with four and a half inches. So, I didn't see that in the forecast. But thanks to Chase and all the operational people that kept the town running. But I also want to welcome Mr. Burke and thank him for this time on this committee. It's not the only committee or commission Mr. Burke stands on. So, true volunteer for the town, and I want to acknowledge Mr. Burke for the time he spends in helping our community. But, Mr. Berkeley, you wanna open up and talk about our Stormwater Fee Advisory Committee meeting recently?
Sure. So, yeah, we're here to talk about the Stormwater Fee Credit System. The policy that you have in front of you is the same exact one that was previously presented. So, there's no changes since the last one you reviewed. And so, the committee met to discuss that policy and ultimately voted to recommend it in the same form for your consideration for approval. And again, just to kind of give the background on what the program is all about. So, we have a Stormwater Enterprise Fund that covers our operation maintenance and regulation compliance for the town's public stormwater system, which conveys all the rainwater to the water bodies around town, mostly the Napanzette River, but there are a few others. And so, the fee is a linear rate. So, basically, we take all of the impervious area in town and we divide it by the budget, and we come up with a rate per square foot, and we apply that to all properties. There's no exemptions to that bill, unlike taxes. This bill is a utility bill, so it goes to everybody. And so, the credit policy had a placeholder in the regulations to be implemented if the board wished. And so, we're here at that point to recommend this policy be implemented. And the idea is that it gives property owners an opportunity to receive credits off of their stormwater utility bill for having stormwater control devices on their property, which achieve the two objectives of permit compliance, which are, one, to release cleaner water, and, two, to release it slower. And then, doing either of those things is good for the environment. It helps the town meet its permit compliance, and it's just a good practice for the property itself. So, the policy that we've recommended is very similar to the City of Newton's policy. They were a great model community to use as a reference, one of many that was presented to us by the MAPC for consideration, being a similar geographic area, similar size, and similar fee structure. So, we feel this is the best fit for us. It is designed intentionally to be simplistic because each application does require review and administration. So, you know, we don't have a real dedicated person that just works on stormwater. In Milton, some communities do, but we don't have that person here. So, it's designed for us to be able to handle the volume that may come in with existing staff, which is why you see, you know, pretty round numbers. And the idea is to keep it as simple as possible so it's easy to understand and easy to implement. So, we met as a committee. I know Mr. Burke will probably have a few words regarding those discussions. But essentially, the vote was to recommend this policy that you have in front of you.
Right. Thank you. Thank you, Chase. Madam Chair, if I might. Yeah, it was a very, very good discussion. Member Burke brought up a good point, and he can bring that up with this board. Again, we're an advisory board to this committee. We're an advisory committee to this board, excuse me. So, it was not a unanimous vote. It was a two-to-one vote. Both Chase and I were in the affirmative. Mr. Burke has a suggestion, which this board can take up and decide. It wasn't, it's, both Chase and I appreciated his suggestion. And again, he's a very great addition to the Stormwater Fee Advisory Committee. So, Mr. Burke, if you will?
Thank you, Madam Chair and distinguished members of the board. I'm against this in its present form. And I'm not convinced that more, that 70, 75% of the rate payers are gonna be able to benefit. This seems to me, and I'm not a CPA, unlike when I served on the committee a couple of years ago, we did have some knowledgeable other residents. But this is designed, I believe, and I respectfully suggest, that it's for the large rate payers. And if I have it correctly, and I know it came up two years ago, where's the money gonna come from the next year? And as the rates are set, they're gonna go up. There're gonna be these discounts. The hole's gonna have to be filled. And it will be filled by the other, across-the-board, rate payers. And when so many are not gonna be able to benefit from this discount, then it's grossly, in my opinion, unfair. Now, I think the world of Chase and Mike, but in the future, I would hope that advisory committees will have more than just one resident on it when the other two guys drafted the program. I say that tongue-in-cheek. But it was a two-to-one vote against it. And perhaps some of these figures can be worked out to convince me. The other thing that I did recommend, and there were rather some positive things about notifying the residents that it exists by hard copies, by emailing, and so on, beyond the internet. And I wanted to reduce for the large commercial projects because the smaller projects have to have at least 50% of their impervious areas removed. So, there's gonna be an initial cost. Now, some of the beneficiaries on this were already required when they, as part of their building permits, to address this issue. And they had to lay out sizable amounts of money, which they should have or could have incorporated into the cost of their doing business. So, without any initial layout, all they're gonna have to do is apply for and receive a 25% discount without any layout or any other things. A homeowner's gonna have to start laying out money for dry wells in order to benefit from this. And it's just, it's not gonna be cost-effective. So, the one thing I did say was, I joked about being the only citizen on the board and knowing how the votes were gonna go. But I think a 25% discount for the commercial, large residential, and institutional industrial should be reduced to 20%. If this is gonna go, then you have to keep the money, the hole that's gonna have to be filled, as I said, is gonna be coming from all vast majority of people who are not gonna be able to benefit from this credit policy. Respectfully.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. Well, I have a bunch of questions now, but I'd like to see if other board members have questions or comments. Ms. Conlon?
I have a question, and I think this is probably best directed to Chase Berkeley or to Mike Dennehy. Chase or Mike, do you have a sense? And did you get any information from the City of Newton as to how this is working for them, both in terms of, I guess, the issues that Mr. Burke raised and how, you know, how effective it is and how received it's been, whether it's well-received by residents and business owners or nonprofits, or whether they've had problems with it. And then, secondly, what the administrative burden has been in Newton and what you think the administrative burden might be here in Milton? It sounds like the...
Oh, you've been muted somehow.
Thank you. It sounds like the applications would be going to the environmental coordinator. So, I'm just wondering, in terms of that person's workload, what are we thinking the burden might be here?
I can take that. So, as far as the volume in Newton, it was actually pretty low. They did not get as much as they anticipated as far as applications. And I don't know if there's a specific reason for that, but that's the reality. And Newton has had a stormwater fee a lot longer than us. I think they're on their 13th or 14th year. So, you know, residents are certainly aware of this charge. So, it just is one of those things, I think, that, you know, larger properties are already required to produce a lot of the documentation that the city requires for them to submit to prove that these stormwater devices are not only there but being maintained every year, and that's a requirement. So, they're just kind of already doing the work that the submission requires. So, it's probably a little easier for them to apply, whereas a homeowner, you know, in some cases, would have to either document it or start documenting it.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Chase. The City of Newton also has a dedicated employee to this, correct?
They do, yes. They have one full-time person that just works on stormwater for them and, you know, can spend time processing applications. So, as far as the level of effort for us, if we were to take this policy as it's written, there would be an initial wave of applications that we would have to review. Some of them require site visits. Some of them require, you know, review of plans. So, the way it's written is that any application would not become effective until the following fiscal year because, for one, we need time to process them. And for two, we have to know how many we have and what effect that will have. So, the way the credit works is it's a reduction in impervious area assessment. So, essentially, it's just changing that denominator for everybody else every time we authorize a credit. And so, we need to have that finalized before we run the rate calculation for the following year. So, you know, we would need that. We would need, we would process everything the year before it takes effect.
Thank you.
Mr. Doyle, you're muted.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A question for Chase. Is the discount credit rate that we have in this proposal the same as that which is utilized in Newton?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. My only other comment is that, as much as I understand Jerry's position, I just want to add the fact that this has a positive impact on the environment of a community when efforts are made to mitigate stormwater impacts, whether they're chemical, soil erosion, any number of negative impacts that can affect the community and therefore drive up costs that are gonna be required in order to remediate those matters. So, with that said, I will support this. I don't have any issue with Chase and Mike are amenable to Jerry's suggestion on the 25% turned to 20%. Either way, I'll be supporter.
Mr. Wells?
Madam Chair, what if we reduced it from 25 to 20? That was a great reaction, Mr. Berkeley.
Honestly, as I mentioned, these are round numbers by design. They're not calculated to be that percentage for any particular reason other than to be simple and intuitive. So, it's a zero-sum game at the end of the day. We have to raise the budget through the revenue, and it's just how you want to distribute that credit versus, you know, full charges to everybody else.
I just, to Mr. Burke's credit, I think he's the first person I ever saw roll up their sleeves and take on stormwater in this town. And to the two gentlemen who he sits on the committee with, who I strongly support all the time, Mr. Berkeley and Mr. Dennehy, he predates both of you. And when many people in this town didn't even know what stormwater was, didn't, couldn't really even grasp it, you rolled up your sleeves and you took this on, to your own credit. And that aspect, I hear you. I hear what you're saying. I do get that. That's why I asked the question. Could we drop it to 20? But that's my question, Madam Chair.
Okay. Mr. Zulis? You're muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right. Well, it seems to me we can do whatever we want. You know, it's our policy. We have the authority to enact the policy. So, it seems to me we can do whatever we want on it. I would like to tease out this idea about the credits for the commercial and large residential customers being, you know, being borne by the smaller residential customers. I think the theory is that whoever pays out money to mitigate this should get some credit for it, whether that's a commercial or large residential. And presumably, if a large residential or commercial building has taken efforts to mitigate, those costs are being, those costs are being transferred or put on their residents. So, those residents are getting charged those costs. And presumably, those residents will benefit if there is a credit for the efforts that were, and the costs that were incurred in order to mitigate at the start. I'm thinking, for example, Fuller Village or for, you know, or for the temple, places that paid money to mitigate. And the question is, well, should they get credit for it just as a residential? So, I'm interested in that. But I do think, Jerry, that there is a theory that says, well, if a commercial or large residential customer has spent money to mitigate, then the credit that they get under this policy is fair, and it could be passed on to their residents, right, for their benefit, right? So, I may be wrong in that, but that's, tell me if I am. And then, so that's an observation, and I welcome anyone pushing back on it. And then, the other, the other point that I would, the other question I'd ask is whether, and this may not be possible, but has there been any pro forma about what this would look like for residents if the credit were 25% as opposed to being at 20%? And, because that would be helpful, right, to see what kind of a difference that would make. If it would make a large difference, be helpful to the residents and wouldn't hurt our larger residential customers as much.
Thank you, Mr. Zulis. Yeah, and just to round out some of that, exactly what you explained, Mr. Zulis, is, I think, what Deborah Felton has spoken about, I think even on the floor of Town Meeting when I first became a board member. And it is an ongoing expense. As somebody who walked the detention basins on the Concom when Fuller was going in, you know, they do need to be, they do need to be kept up and maintained. And to Mr. Doyle's point, the environment, what we're trying to do is to encourage people to steward the environment. And you're talking about much more intensive uses on the land than, say, a single-family home. So, I, though, was interested in what that rate, you know, what that would look like for other rate payers who are then not mitigating and bearing that. But of course, it's spread over a lot more rate payers. So, I had that question too about what... So I, I had that question too, about what, what is 20% versus 25% look like? But um, but I think this is, you know, in general, the way to go. Thank you. Yes, Mr. Burke.
Thank you. Uh, I know some, a couple of years ago, when we first served on, on the Stormwater Committee, that the question can, did come up about um, disc, uh, credits, uh, discounts. And I was all for it. Um, but at that time, it, it was not the right time. There are some administrative challenges to this. There are going to be a lot of administrative challenges. Now, for example, I've got, I've got two drywells and a very large roof. And I, I could get to that 50, I could mitigate 50%. Um, but I would still probably have to spend somewhere around $1,500 because I have a large driveway at the end of my driveway to put in a basin and another drywell. So, a- and I'm the type of guy that will spend $2,000 if I'm going to save $100 on this fee. So I, I, you know, but for most people, they're not going to have the opportunity to mitigate. They're not going to be able to do it, to put in drywells, um, and so on and so forth. The, the initial outlay is going to be vast. I mean, if you can somehow go to some of these um, uh, get some funding so that you can give them um, a credit for their, their initial outlay. A lot, like I said, I mean, you mentioned Fuller Village, they've already done. The, all they're going to have to do is sign on the dotted line and they go automatically get a 25% discount. And that's a good thing. I'm not, i- in theory, I'm not against it. But in app, the, the common sense, the application of, of the credit, the way it is now, is, is, is a challenge for most people. If you really wanted to get them, to get a lot of people to take steps, um, you know, the, if there was some grant money that can, can be the feed for people to do this, um, that would be great. But like I said, a lot of people aren't going to be able to take advantage of this, um, in my opinion. So uh, again, in, in theory, I'm all for it, but in application, i- it's, a lot of people are not going to be able to benefit from it. Now, would it be, um, now, I'm surprised that, Chase, thank you for the, that figure on Newton, that there aren't many people taking advantage of this. And I'm wondering why. And I'm wondering if that bolsters my argument, that people just are not in a position to mitigate. So, and I know we can't do what Boston did, which is hook everybody down sprouts up, up into the stormwater runoff. But that's my position. I don't think a lot of people are going to be able to benefit from it. And then when the larger groups like, Chase, didn't you have a figure of, it'd be like for Fuller Village, it would be $600 less from 25 to 20%? But on overall savings, a thou- thousands of dollars, I, I don't, do I have that correct?
It, it's somewhere in that range. Yeah, I, I forget off the top of my head what that bill is. But um, you know, they pay in excess of $10,000 a year in, on stormwater utility fees. So um, it would be a 5% difference on that.
Well, Mr. Burke, I hear what you're saying about grants. I, I was thinking the same thing as you were talking. And I was reminded that when I first came on the board, I investigated ways to supply um, zero like interest loans or grants to residents to help them um, when they have sort of a, a problem with the lateral sewer line um, into their homes and needs to be replaced because it's very expensive. And um, there, I, I checked in with DLS, the treasurer helped me. And it's really hard to put something like that together um, because uh, the answer we get is Milton's not a bank. It's a town. Uh, but I, but I, so I hear you and, and my heart's in the same place with the grants. And, and if we could ever do something like that, I think it would be great. I'm sorry, Ms. Conlon?
Madam Chair, um, you know, my sense is it's been at least four to five years since we put the stormwater, stormwater fee in effect. And we have been talking about putting a credit system into place for a lot, for most of that time. So, you know, I would rather not let the perfect be the enemy of the good here. I think we have a good proposal from our advisory committee. And it's apparent that Mr. Berkeley and Mr. Burke and Mr. Dennehy have all put a fair amount of time into this. And I think Jay Fundling was a member at one point and probably had some contribution uh, that he made as well. I would be inclined to, to vote in favor of this tonight. But in light of the comments that have come up, I wonder whether it might make sense to post this policy on our website, give the public an opportunity to, a week or two to weigh in on it. You know, I, see whether this creative ideas that come up that might address Mr. Burke's points. Because I, I understand the argument that he's making. My sense would be that it's better to try to put this policy, which is based on the Newton policy, in place. Um, and particularly if there's not a lot of other precedent policies for us to look to, because there's not a lot of communities that have handled stormwater uh, in the way we have. I know many are, are going in this direction. But if we don't have a lot of precedent to look from, I would want to consider putting this in place and seeing how it goes and reevaluating it at a year. We can always tweak or revise a policy. But, you know, if the board is looking for more information or we, there's no harm also, unless there's a time sensitivity here, Chase. I don't, wouldn't see any reason with deferring this until a future meeting and putting it out, allowing some public input onto it. And then um, you know, seeing what the public comes back to us with, if anything. Just a suggestion.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Zulus?
I like that idea. Oh, I'm, am I muted? No? So I like that idea. Uh, you know, I, 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 I've wanted the credit policy for a while. And I'm, you know, I, I, this is coming a little faster than I anticipated, frankly. I didn't think we were going to have anything till the spring. So, so if, if we could put it up on the website and, 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 and um, have some more resident engagement on it, I think that'd be a good thing. Um, on the difference between 25 and 20%, if, if Fuller Village's bill is $10,000, it's a $500 difference, right? And, and, and if that could, if that could bridge the gap between, between um, uh, the three members of our committee, my view would be, you know, that, that, that doesn't seem like a huge difference to me. And if that could bridge the gap, then I, I would think we, that might be something we would consider. Um, if we could get unanimity, unanimity from our hardworking um, hard-working committee. So, so I like the idea of, of putting on the website and encouraging some more resident feedback on this.
Thank you. Mr. Wells?
I concur. That, that was my, I concur. I think that, I mean, it is, stormwater is brand new to everyone. We all, we're all familiar with Fuller Village. Um, let's try Katie and Michael's suggestion for a couple of weeks and then come back to this and see what happens.
Uh, Mr. Dennehy? Uh, you're muted.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you all. Um, I, I thoroughly appreciate that. I just hope that this does not create questions and people asking for site inspections, right? Um, that, that's what I hope this posting doesn't accomplish, right? Someone calling Town Hall and saying, can you send the environmental coordinator out to see what my property looks like and if I'll qualify if I do X, Y, and Z? Uh, we, we don't have the administrative capacity to do that.
Yeah, I, 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 I can't imagine that. I, I mean, Arthur, correct me if I'm wrong, but when I, I was on the Conservation Commission, if, if people really needed determinations, they needed to get a professional. But um, and I would think this would be the same sort of thing. Um, and, and did I, I'm sorry, out of the corner of my eye, did I see that you had raised your hand?
I had. Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to um, say in supporting this direction in which we're moving uh, that Jerry's point about communication to the community in a form, in addition to electronic medium, is very well taken because of the numbers of people who have expressed uh, either a lack of knowledge about the stormwater issue of benefits to begin with, let alone that there would be a possibility of benefit stream. And, and also spell out that point that we were taking um, earlier about the fact that this does mitigate environmental issues. We all know that there's been a significant increase in precipitation over the past several decades. And we well know the reasons for that and more is anticipated in the future. So this is a proactive step that the town is considering, that we are considering as a select board. And we have to underscore the future cost savings that the town would incur in the repair and expansion of services that might need to be expanded and repaired absent uh, this type of a discount credit policy.
Thank you very much. And uh, if there are no other comments, I, I just want to say thank you very much to um, our Stormwater Advisory Committee and um, and for presenting to us and, and helping us understand and think through this.
Thank you.
Be seeing you again in a couple of weeks. Yes, Mr. Zulus?
Yeah, I, I don't know that this is a, this, a motion is needed for this. But I would say, you know, if we put this up on the website for comments, uh, you know, that we come back within a month.
Right. That, that's what I was saying. We'll see them in, in a couple of weeks, I, I think. Um, I, I thought the idea of two weeks is um, just the right amount of time.
Yeah, although you want to, you may want to have, uh, have it up there for, and people can come in for citizen speak and give any comments. And then maybe we want to act that night, or maybe we want to take consideration of the comments and decide at the next meeting, so.
Madam?
Yes.
Madam Chair, I think that makes sense. And, and who should we, should we delegate? Um, maybe even, I, I, I guess I defer to the town administrator on this. Maybe the environmental coordinator is the person to collect comments and then feed them to the committee. I, you know, there's a lot of emails already that go to the town administrator and the public works director. So however you think administratively it makes sense to handle that, I think there should be a point person who could collect comments for the committee.
Sure. Yep. Erica DeDonato uh, will certainly handle that capably. Thanks.
Okay. So maybe we won't be seeing that. They, they probably don't need to come back for the, the comment. For you. Um, well, Mr. Dennehy will be here anyway. Okay. Great.
Good evening. Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Service each and everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Chase. Get some rest.
Now, let's see if Mr. Clark and Mr. Walsh are here. Brian Walsh, I see him uh, in the attendees and Dan Clark as well.
Madam Chair, just for the record, I'm, and I want the minutes reflect, I'm going to be recused on this item. And I will listen to the discussion and come back when it's ended for, because, again, because I work with the Towns Bond Council, I want to um, recuse myself on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and they are here to speak to us uh, about the uh, capital request that the Capital Planning Investment Committee, um, Improvement, sorry, Committee a- approved um, a couple of weeks ago. Welcome and thank you for joining us.
Of course. Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, so I'll, I'll keep this brief. I know that you have a long agenda tonight. Um, so as a follow-up to our presentation a few weeks back, um, budget's still the same um, for the three projects. We haven't really looked or reviewed into, or edited that any additionally. But I did want to just remind people that we did have CPA funding that we had talked about. Um, you know, that we had identified with our architect, our headquarters in the Atherton buildings. Uh, but what I really wanted to focus on was the funding and the cash flow. Um, you know, kind of outlining the time period of spring 2022 through um, fall of 2026. And as you can see in the upper right-hand corner, it's kind of the groundbreaking and then the opening of each of the stations along that timeline and the subsequent cash flow uh, for each of those stations for construction and then also just professional services for our OPM and architect through that. So that could, that's a combined cash flow uh, for those numbers that you see there. Um, so I really wanted to focus on the, the funding. And this is what we talked to the Capital Improvement Planning Committee about. And um, there's the Special Purpose Stabilization Fund, the chapter 43 legislation. Uh, that was a homeroad petition. And just to, for those, I know the select board's keenly aware of this, but just to explain um, to those watching at home, uh, there was an existing debt service related to the town, school, and library project, which is the blue line declining year over year. Um, and what the legislation did was freeze that in 2018 uh, and charge the tax for uh, payers and residents of the town uh, a flat tax over that period of time, starting in 2020, uh, equivalent to the 2018 rate. So that's where you see the amount that we owe declining, but the amount that we're collecting um, as being continuous across over time. And the delta, the green shaded area uh, between those two is the funds that are available for the Fire Station Building Committee project. And as you can see over time, uh, as that debt declines to zero, the amount that goes in each year increases. So this is a chart uh, fiscal year 2020 through 2040. I just cut it off for the presentation so that the text could be legible. Uh, you can see that the first year, it's around $75,000 and it increases each year um, and to a maximum of just over 2.3 million in 2030, which is that 2018 uh, existing debt, existing uh, debt service uh, that was frozen. And as you can see, the cumulative balance on the right-hand side, in theory, each year, if we're not spending money out of it, continues to grow um, and be stored in that stabilization fund. So the cash flow that we looked at, we looked, uh, compartmentalized it into fiscal years um, and tried to come up with a bond schedule, working with Unibank to understand how you could structure the debt. And went through a lot of different models. Uh, and there's really only one scenario, which was reducing the early principal payments because we have less money in the beginning and more at the end. So the debt service has a fast average in life issue, but then it's a level debt service. So we're paying pretty much the same every year. And to extend that out even further, uh, we're taking some short-term nu- notes and paying just interest before we issue the bond. So what that funding actually looks like, this project would be starting in 2020. I, I, I have it shown on this chart from 2020, but um, you can see the dates in the first column of the bond issues. And then the short-term notes that listed in the additional information columns. And then you see what our principal and interest payments are each year. And then we have a cumulative stabilization fund balance. And you can see in year 2022, it goes up significantly. Um, and the intent behind that to make this model work was that this uh, Capital Improvement Planning Committee uh, and the select board through town meeting had set aside $600,000 uh, in case the Fire Station Building Committee never got to a construction project and therefore couldn't bond the money spent for the design services and OPM services over the course of a 30-year bond uh, with a construction project. Um, legally, you can only do it for five years. Um, so that was there as uh, leverage in case our project never came to fruition. The model work, working um, with Unibank uh, and Capital Improvement, we had a discussion about transferring a portion of that money in. Um, it would need to be about $405,000. Uh, and I put it in as fiscal year 2022 uh, would be the ideal time to do it. Um, and as you go through, you then see um, as the notes are issued and we start paying interest for the first few years, um, we're not making significant payments at that point. Um, the payments will really start to kick in with the bond. Uh, note five interest in 2027 and the bond um, is the first significant payment. And that's all to try to get to that time period where there's less exists, existing debt, debt and more money going into the stabilization fund. Uh, I also note that in, by 2025, ideally, it could be 2026 or 27, but I think 2025 is a realistic target. Um, there's about $640,000 in um, very conservatively, $640,000 uh, in eligible CPA money for these headquarters in Atherton project. So we, we put into the model of getting that $640,000 to help make this funding mechanism work. And as you go through the years, you see the cumulative stabilization fund balance. Um, and the most important and critical thing in that column is that it never goes to zero or negative. And you can see the closest it gets is uh, in year 2043. It gets close, it's around $2,000 uh, and then starts to go up again. Um, and I also wanted to note that 2053 would be the last year that a full stabilization fund deposit would be required uh, if no other projects were added to this funding mechanism. Uh, that would be the last year.
Yeah, if I can interject, I don't think, you may not realize, I don't think anyone can see that far-right column, the years 2039 through 2056, bit of stabilization. At least I'm seeing all the, the members on here, or maybe it's just me.
Madam Chair, can you see?
I can move that. I apologize. Go right ahead.
Yeah, you can. I was just going to say you can move it and then you can see it.
So years, I have 20, year 2053 is the last year that we would need a stabilization fund. So that could be that existing debt that's been frozen could be turned to zero. And then there'd be a couple subsequent payments, 54 through 56 fiscal year. And then it is also important to understand that the way the legislation was written, if we get to the end of the project and there's, you know, any additional cost savings beyond what we hope or any additional funds in this stabilization fund, they go back to the town through reducing the tax levy is what the intended. So it's not that the money is just sitting there. There's a mechanism to get it out of the stabilization fund, so it goes back to benefit the citizens. So I wanted to try to keep that short and sweet. That's all I have. I don't know if there's questions for members of the select board.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Mr. Doyle?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Brian and Dan. Dan, just a quick question on the prospective CPA funds. Is that a relatively conservative estimate, taking into account that at least three of the categories have 10% allocations required by statutes, which would mean 30% has to go elsewhere? And should we be assuming that if the committee moves toward generously funding from CPA monies, the the capitalization of the Fire Station Building, that much of that money would primarily go to the historic value and then that might offset the 10% requirement for the historic district as well. So I'm just wondering about the internal manipulations and calculations.
Yeah, the numbers that were calculated for the CPA are historic qualifiers only. That's the only category related to the CPA that we would be eligible for within these projects. And our architect took a conservative approach to that of, you know, things that he knew would be easily justifiable, things that he had seen in other historic projects that he's done for fire stations and towns that have CPA in place already. So it may go up, but it's a number that we're extremely confident in. And additionally, doing it by 2025, I'm extremely confident that there would, you know, be enough money to cover ours, assuming other projects. There, the CPA has significant funding potential and I don't remember the numbers off the top of my head, but I'm sure Board Member Zulus does.
So, so the numbers that we had for this year would have been 880,000, 880,000. That would have, that was based on a conservative estimate for the match, of which you had to use 10% for historic, 10% for affordable and 10% for
Environmental.
Environmental. So so that means that you could use 80%, right, for one bucket, one of the three buckets. And 80% of 880 is about 720. So, so, and those numbers will likely go up, right? Over the next three years. So I think, yeah, I think, I think Arthur, you know, should the CPA committee see fit, there's plenty of room there to fund 640 or maybe more in an individual year for bonding purposes.
I think, Dan, he was right on where my mind was going. So thank you.
I think too that we, that the CPA committee will be able to also look out for those matching dollars for shovel-ready projects. So you know, if we have CPA that we're devoting, there's also often grant opportunities there, which is part of the reason for passing it as well. Mr. Wells, did you have something? Oh, you're muted.
Unbelievable. Can we get a remote control for like unmute? Remote controls are the only else in the world. Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Brian and Dan. It was four years I've been on Capitol. It was four years ago when I first got on Capitol and Mr. Hooley was co-chair and all of the legwork took place to pass this article. And even though Tom is gone and now Amy has moved on as well, and so there, and as your liaison to this, to the Fire Station Building Committee and all they've done in the past three years now, Brian, it's got to be two to three years of work to get to where we are tonight. My goal had been that continually, and I've said this a hundred times, is to try and do this project doing the entire thing under Article 43. A year ago, I was a little nervous because I could just see it's taking so long, the inflation of just construction costs. Thankfully, as Mr. Zulus and all of you who worked on CPA know, that the historic nature of these buildings, that between that money that the capital committee parked in stabilization, capital stabilization a year ago and the one-time drawdown, our use of CPA funds should be able to fund this entire project without asking the residents of this community for another tax storm. And that's a pretty incredible thing that we're going to have three brand-new fire stations, 21st century facilities that will clearly serve this community, public safety-wise, for the next 100 years. I think that's a credit to everyone and all of you, whether, you know, the CPA, everyone who worked, I don't think any of you, for me, sitting there and watching all these different entities, I don't think any of you could have realized that this would come together. And I thank Dan and Amy and I can't think of her name from Unibank. What's it? Just my yeah, who worked so hard on this. Because as Brian and Dan know, if I've said this once, I've said it a hundred times. I thank you. I hope that for the members and for the residents of the town, that you get a good grasp of where they brought this to tonight.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Sorry, Mr. Zulus?
Just one quick question. Dan and Brian, can you put a column in that last slide that shows the annual payment? The bonds? Just that that might be helpful. Just that last slide you had, we had, you had the principal interest you had. If we could have a column showing the annual outlay and maybe you can probably, I can probably, you can probably figure it out. I think by the difference from one year to the next in the, in the fund balance. But if it's easy to do to throw that in there, that would be, that would be helpful. And then, and then if we could have that presentation, if you could forward that presentation, that'd be helpful, too.
Yeah, Mr. Zulus, I sent it to Hillary, Mr. Dennehy and Madam Collins, but there, I also shared the whole, this is, what I put on the screen is, you know, six, seven columns of about 15. So I'll send the whole model over to the same people and you can take a deeper dive into it.
Great, great. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Walsh and Mr. Clark. We appreciate all of your work. You must be getting very excited. And, and thank you for coming in and presenting this to us. I want to note that the Capital Committee, it was a unanimous vote. So I think that says a lot. Yes, Mr. Walsh?
Real quick, so to sort of address what Richard brought up, it's funny, the time has passed really quickly in a lot of ways for us. We've been working hard on this for quite a while. We're actually, in May, will have been the committee for four years. During the four years, time does fly. And Madam Chairman, to your point, this is an exciting time for us. You know, honestly, my time at town meeting, there've been a few attempts to try to study and what should we do about the fire stations? And I joined in the mid 80s. And, you know, we are now, I feel, on the precipice of really getting this done and providing three stations that are going to be healthy, properly tied for 21st century and three stations the town is really going to be proud of. Thank you for your help and support.
Thank you.
Smile, gentlemen. You're almost there. You're getting there. You're getting there. You're close.
Well, thank you very much again for joining us and we have a good evening. Bye. Miss Conlon is back. So I do want to note that it's nine o'clock and I'm going to try to move as quickly through some of these things as we can. I think several of them don't really require discussion. But I do want to be mindful and ask the, the board if there's a time at which we'd like to plan to stop in case we need to switch some business around or defer something. I said, I said I would be better about doing that and perhaps I should check back in at 10 o'clock, but okay, good. I see the head nodding. Excellent. Okay. So our next, next item is Franklin Street, the Winter Plaza Shared Streets and Spaces Grant Application. Mr. Zirinsky isn't with us tonight, but I will just announce that we received a memorandum from him withdrawing the request to apply for this grant. And after consideration and listening to residents, he said that he felt that it was best to devote the department's resources and time to help resolve some of the longstanding issues that were raised during, during the process of looking at the application. And and I'm not sure that we need to vote on the withdrawal because we hadn't necessarily adopted anything or approved anything. But I'd like to give members the chance to say something if they would like.
Madam Chair, yeah, I would, I would. I understand Mr. Zirinsky's reasoning and he is, he and both, both he and Ellison Quinn have an awful lot on their plates right now, including in the realm of 40B projects that they're working on. But, you know, although we heard from a number of residents who were opposed to the Franklin Street, Winter Garden or Winter Plaza, we also heard from a lot of residents who were very much in favor of it. And I want to just voice support for that. This is exactly what we want the town planner to be working on. Seeking out grants like this was the right thing for him to be doing and looking at. I also happen to think that this might have made sense in either the Milton Village or the Central Avenue Business District. You know, we've got a lot of things happening in Central Avenue. A year from now, we'll probably have a new condominium building already, units being sold. We have new businesses in that area as well as in the square. And I think the planner looking into this and residents weighing in both in support and with concerns, we all recognize that there were traffic concerns in the square, but this is something that was certainly worthwhile. And I am, I'm sure we all are happy that the planning director took the time to investigate this, to work on the application, to talk. I understand he had a number of conversations with residents, including some that lasted for a very long time. And he has a lot of things on his plate. So I wanted to thank Tim Zirinsky for his efforts on this project. And hopefully, in the future, residents will understand that this is what we want the planning staff to be looking into. We may not ultimately pursue a grant application or go ahead with a project after we get input, but this is very appropriate and this was, this was a worthwhile exercise.
Well, well said. And I think it's, it bodes well for the future because the, as you said, these are the, the exact kinds of things that we want to be trying out as a community and taking advantage of. Mr. Wells?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I concur with Ms. Conlon's comments. I am disappointed. I'm disappointed only in, like, I was the same Katie's correct, for the people who were against it, I had probably twice as many who just being in the neighborhood who were foreign, wanted to see it try. I mean, one of the big things that I had hoped for was that just the creation of something like this would be the, the impetus to when the deck is finished, kind of move that concept over there. Because the one thing I don't want to see in the next 25 years, when this deck is finished, is just an idle place sitting that doesn't exist. We've all seen the movie Field of Dreams. If you build it, they will come. And I think it's incumbent upon us. We have a great chamber, great residents, so many things in East Milton now that are willing to like be participants in their community. I don't want to lose that. And that's my only, my only disappointment is that I thought this was a great opportunity to try something from many fronts, but I agree with Katie. I think these are the types of things you need to continue to be community. They're the little things that can make a community special. Are they perfect? No. But I appreciate their intentions and on this. Mr. Zulus is chomping at the bit over there.
Oh, no, no, no. I actually, you know, I'll say I agree and I think it was a very good process. And, and, you know, Richard, to piggyback on what you said two weeks ago, if we move forward and, and address the loading zone concern and work on that and move forward on that, then there'll be a lot less opposition when we try things and we want to try things going forward. So so I think the message is let's get that loading zone thing figured out and then, and then, and then go on from there.
Absolutely. I was disappointed that it didn't, didn't work this time around, but I am really, I was really heartened that, that he's talking about even solving some of those, those long time, longstanding concerns because that loading zone, as you said, and, and other things have been along with us. Any, anything else on this? Okay, thank you. Thank you again, Mr. Zirinsky.
I'd actually like to, as I said, number 10 is deferred. And I'd like to actually move 12 up because 11 somewhat depends upon 12. I'm not, I'm not sure that, that we actually want to have a lengthy discussion on this tonight because we do have a session with Judy Barrett and Johanna Schneider called Working with 40Bs on February 2nd. And it may be that we'd like to defer this discussion about comments on the 40Bs until after that. It may make a little more sense to do that. So I, I'd be interested if people just want to sort of open this up and then decide whether, whether we really want to talk about it or if you just would like to defer it outright.
Ms. Conlon?
Madam Chair, I'm okay either way. I guess at the late hour, I'd be okay with deferring it, but I do think it's important that we answer the question on the timing that Mr. Corcoran raised at the beginning of the session. So I see we have a number of people
Thank you.
are impacted by the Canton Avenue 40Bs in the attendee list. So I think in terms of timing, if we can just clarify the deadline for our response and when we will take this letter up.
Right. And I also wanted to say something about that substantial change. So as Judy Barrett has, has said a few times now, that the substantial change that, that request comes from the applicant at a certain point in, in the application process. That being said, I, if you read back through the Ice House application, they, they did go and ask if they needed, if it was a substantial change when they, they moved the massing back and they changed design and things like that. So it's, it's actually not the town, but, but the applicant that asks for that. And as far as the review, my, my suggestion was that we review the letter then on the 10th. And then I think we'll need, we may need an intervening meeting the following week, even if it's just for this. So that people can have a chance in that week or so to look at the letter, to send emails back or then come to a public comment and make, make some comments on that. And then we'd go back, rework the letter and then vote it on the 24th, which was the original date that we were going to vote it and it's due on the 25th.
Okay, thank you.
How does that strike people? Do we think we can do a meeting in between? Even if it's just for this?
Yeah, we, our life is one big meeting. That's what we are.
Yes, I know. And thank you so much for reminding me about that. I should have highlighted it. I have so much writing on my page. And I thank Mr. Corcoran for the question. Yes, Mr. Zulus?
I think in terms of the timing that the, the residents are concerned about, where are we getting that letter into mass housing? Um, uh, where are we getting that letter into mass housing? Um, a good uh. You know, two weeks or more before the six forty-eight is taken up by the Board of Appeals. So my my guess is uh not, you know, not to speak for them, but I but I think that fits within. The timing that they would uh that they would be happy with.
Right, a- and I I think that's where our original timing kind of came from as as well. Um, it wasn't just the twenty-fifth, it just happened that the twenty-fifth work worked with that, so. Um, okay, do do we want to set that intermediate meeting now because people are here instead of waiting until future meeting dates? Yes, Mister Wells?
So my my point, Madam Chair. I I think that the substantial change in the Ice House application, the substantial change. In the six forty-eight, six fifty-two application is like apples and oranges. When we took that sidewalk the other night, the other day, uh. Miss Conolly, as as well as other colleagues from the planning board. With the developer. At least ten times I noted. That they made reference. Between the two, drawing a nexus between the two projects. Which would lead a reasonable person to believe it was one project, not two projects. And that in alone shows you, like, they're not looking this as two projects, they're looking at this as one project. And even though to your comment that, you know, it's up to the applicant, I still think a- a- and and I see Mister Zulus. Nodding his head because I I believe he's thinking the same way, but our argument has to be truly, I mean, this is like. We went to the Fordale ship to buy a Ford and we came out of there with a vote and and you know what I mean, it's like. It's like a sleight of the hand here. This, the sidewalk that we took last week. Is completely different from the one we took, but the nexus, they view this as one thing. They kept referring to the two, the two projects as one project and and the other word thing that that I noticed is. I was looking for the word proposed. And I never heard it mentioned once. They just kept saying our plan, our plan, our plan. We may not win this fight, but we need to make this argument. This is like a curve ball. And we had, this needs to go back to the starting board because the impact on those neighbors in that neighborhood is tremendous. It's tremendous with one project. It's beyond tremendous with the two of them and. Um, I just, I've thought and thought and thought about. Uh, in my head like. You look at Winter Valley, which is the abutto six forty-eight. One of the abutts, uh, six fifty-two, it's what, it's like. You don't even, it's built, just the way it's built, the character of it, this is completely. Different from anything we have had in this community, anything like that. I think we need to really make that argument, so I'll stop and.
I don't think anybody disagrees with you, uh, Mister Wells, and I I I I think that we will see that that's going to be addressed. In our letter, but not maybe in the same way that that we're being asked about. I I I I um. I I think procedurally, eh you know, there there's the, there are the regulations and how things go per the regulations. And then the things that um, you know, so we. I I eh that I I think we just have to wait and see the letter, but I know that obviously they've pointed out that they're connecting these projects. Will be addressing that as far as I'm concerned, but we also need to see a letter, but um.
Would it be prudent for us, and and I really kind of defer to. Katie and Michael on this. Would it be prudent for us in in a meeting with the ZBA to make our argument, our view of this to them?
Um, uh, we're we're, I I I I, at this point, I mean, our. Our letters are going to be reviewed by our special counsel and um. You know, I I just, I think that we also need to. To take that, that uh Johanna Schneider's. Counsel into. Account as well because she is the forty B expert. Um, so. Yes, Mister Zulus?
So Richard and I are in lockstep on this. I mean, you know, uh, everyone agrees that this is one project. Um, everyone, and so, uh, you know, it's it it is incumbent on us, uh, wherever we are, whomever we're in front of. To state the obvious, which is that this is one project and it needs to be considered as one project. Um, and that's uh, so I'm I'm confident that we'll say that uh in our letter and I'm confident that we'll say that. In a the most persuasive and procedurally um accurate way, but uh, but uh. But we need to state the obvious and state the reality, and I'm confident we'll do that.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I I just think it's important to point out the, I think the entire board is in lockstep on this um point, so I I just want to. I want to clarify that for the sake of the people who are in the attending list.
Yeah, I wasn't, I'm sorry.
I didn't think you were, but I just took clarify.
We just because he'd said it, Katie, I I.
Yeah, I understand.
I I didn't mean to suggest otherwise.
Yeah, no, I I think I think we all know that. I mean, that. That the P L says that, you know, they're connected. It's so. It it's, it's, yeah, it's obvious. Um, but uh, but but thank you, and I think we'll be getting uh good advice. On how to best present that. So. Is there?
Madam Chair, did you say you wanted to schedule another meeting?
I I I I think that would be good, especially because people are are listening and um their their time is precious and they can get it on their calendars, so. Um. I know that there 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 are some dates for hearings. It's not clear to me that that. All the dates are taken and I I won't, I'd like to stay out of the afternoon so that. Residents could actually come. Uh, Mister Dennehy, do you have some ideas about what? Day we might be able to um?
I don't, unfortunately.
Okay, um. I'm wondering uh if uh. Okay, oh, I really wanted to. To um. Do a deep now. Um. I I I don't think that there, the ZBA is staying with their original calendar because I've seen that they've. Cancelled some dates, is that, or is that just my impression? Um, because right now we have them for the sixteenth, seventeenth and eighteenth, um, and we weren't supposed to be able to meet on.
You very.
On like the seventeenth, which is a Wednesday. Um.
Madam Chair, would it make sense to try to schedule this offline once we confirm the the Board of Appeals dates and then just put out? Press release on the website as to what the dates are?
Maybe we can send out an email blast. Yeah, okay, that's too bad. Okay, well, thank you. So we'll have to schedule that. Um. Great, okay. Okay, apologies for that. Um. It is better to check with them. Okay, so uh now if we move down to twelve. Uh, in speaking with um Johanna Schneider. Um, and I think, again, this is something that we'll. We'll cover uh in our February second session. Uh, it's important to treat each. Um, process wise, each application that's before the ZBA the same. And so uh if we address things that are um. Uh, haven't been resolved fr- from the P L stage with one, then we would need to do that with all of them, so. Um, if that's something we feel as if we we want to do, then I think it makes all kinds of sense to. Look at um. That letter, that uh that we had her, her touch up for us, if you will. Um, if we're not sure that we'd like to do that for all of them, then maybe we would want to defer until. Um. We actually have that session on the second. So they'll be able to answer questions for us too. Mister Zulus, you look as if you're.
Y- yeah, I mean, I I I I I mean, I my my sense is that uh there's no reason not to do it. Uh, the same for all of them and point out the differences and point out the benefits and and the and the detriments and I and I, you know, I think. You know, there's a clear difference with the Ice House and and uh and some of the other projects, and so I'm. I guess I'm on, it's unclear to me why we wouldn't do that, but you know, maybe, maybe I'm missing something.
That my my, I have the same thought, um, but I don't want to make any assumptions. Uh, because everybody's, everybody has different ideas, so um. Does that track for everyone else? Yeah, okay.
Yes.
Very good. Um, so, timing wise, then if we if we look at that. I I'm not sure that we have to have them in before everyone, and now we can't because we have two that have started. Um, so I I guess I'm I'm ki- I'm curious about a bit of a production schedule. Uh, obviously, we should probably work on five eighty-two next because that's the one that's being heard. Um, but I'm open to target dates for all of them. Um. If uh. If people would like to suggest something, or if we should just try to get them, get get a couple done for the next meeting and then. Mister Wells? Oh, okay, sorry, you raised your glasses. Got it, okay, so I I saw some some head nods, so maybe uh work on five eighty-two and then um. Six forty next, yeah, right, okay. Um, I I'm happy to keep plugging away with these unless somebody else would like. Um, to to work on them and I'm happy to work as a team too, if that would be better for people, whatever. Um, so. All right, I'll I'll just continue working on them, and if somebody has a burning desire, you can just um ping me or ping Mister Dennehy. So that we're not breaking the open meeting law. Um, okay, great. Um, so that being said, uh. Did everybody have a chance to review um the the modifications to the letter for I Ice House? Which I I think maybe I. I I may have put the wrong address on that one because I've been going to all the hearings for five eighty-two, so um. So i- if people would like to make any further modifications or edits, um. Say something otherwise, if you'd like to just make a motion to accept it, that's fine too.
Um.
Yes.
Madam Chair, I thought. I I thought there were still some placeholders in this draft, so I didn't think we were going to be finalizing it tonight.
Okay.
Right under the first paragraph, you know, there's a ref- there's a parenthetical with questions.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I thought I took that out in the clean copy. Did you not get the clean copy as well?
I'm I'm looking at the clean copy and that's at least the one that's attached to the agenda.
That's not good because that's not the one that I meant to attach. Um. Okay, no, that that's that's out. What what I what I did was go through and accept all the changes. And um, uh, do you have the red line?
Yeah, eh eh I'm trying to pull it back up, but when I looked at that the other day, I thought that was still in there.
Right, okay, well, that's, but that shouldn't be in there, and then all all of the changes were accepted. Um, so if you, if you want to, if you want to to wait to see a clean copy. Um, then we can wait until our next meeting. Um.
I'm just, eh eh I'm just trying to pull it up, others might have some comments on it.
Yeah, well, let me see if I can just send. My apologies.
I thought in the last draft that we uh that we got, that that included some of the uh comments from council. That all of those uh placeholders were resolved.
Um. They they were in her red line and I and I do have a copy that that is clean and that's the one I thought I sent, but I must not have. I must have sent a different one. I I I must have sent my original. Um.
What, I'm sorry, would it be all right to approve it subject to any additional edits? Just to get it going, so we don't have to come back to, we're coming back to a lot of stuff tonight.
I mean, that's fine with me if everybody was happy with Johanna Schneider's edits.
I agree, uh, the edits are corresponding to the motion on the copy that I have, you've noticed red line.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'd be willing to make the motion.
There's still some, there's some questions in the margin on the red line, but um I think those can be easily resolved. It's really just asking. Whether, you know, whether a discussion with staff or the board.
Right, and she and I worked through those actually together on the phone, and so um, so it says. Exactly that, it says representatives of the board and um. Planning, planning boards or plant, planning board member, planning board representative here. Let me just read it out to you, sorry. Um. The language is.
I I'm fro- I'm fine with the council's changes as well, I just want to point out the margin.
It's just discussions with town staff and representatives of the board. So, and planning board. Um, so that's it, okay.
So, Richard, you're moving the motion?
I will, uh, so this, we're in twelve, correct? This is the motion I'm reading. So I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve the agreement between the, what number just, did you say, no, Michael, not twelve?
It's the letter for the Ice House.
I'll make a motion to approve the letter of comment to the zoning board of appeals and authorize. No, that that's not it. Uh, I don't have it, then someone else got a. Read on my, I'm reading on my phone here because I.
There's no, there's no motion, so um.
So I'll make a, I'll make a mo- a motion to approve this agreement, which we understand is subject to final.
It's not, it's not an agreement, so the motion is to um approve a letter. Um. Uh, to the ZBA. On the proposed forty B development at four eighty-five to four eighty-seven Blue Hills Parkway, the Ice House project. Um, subject to. Edits made by council, special counsel Johanna Schneider.
I'll second it, you made it.
Thank you. All those in favor, Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mister Doyle?
Yes.
Mister Wells?
Yes.
Mister Zulus?
Yes.
Collins, yes, thank you, everyone. And um I will get the, an actual clean copy. To Hillary and she can also send it out to you when it goes to Beverly Sutton. Um, for distribution. So, uh, thirteen, now we're, now we're approving contracts. May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll move that we approve the agreement between the town of Milton and Tetra Tech for forty B project peer review. For an amount not to exceed seventeen thousand eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars and to authorize the town administrator to sign the agreement.
You, all those in favor, Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mister Doyle?
Yes.
Mister Wells?
Yes.
Mister Zulus?
Yes.
Miss Collins, yes, thank you. Um, Van Ness too, uh, that's the next agreements to be approved.
I'll move to approve the agreements between the town of Mel- Milton and Van Ness for forty B prod- project peer review for an amount not to exceed five thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. And to authorize the town administrator to sign the agreements.
Second.
And I I I would like to note that that's per agreement, so that's per property being reviewed. Um, that's not that clear from the motion, so, thanks. Um, all those in favor, Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mister uh Doyle?
Yes.
Mister Wells?
Yes.
Mister Zulus?
Yes.
Miss Collins, yes, thank you.
Madam Chair, if I might?
Yes.
Yeah, just just a quick explanation, uh Attorney Freitag, Town Council can give a quick explanation. These were the. The peer review contracts that were approved at our last meeting. Uh, there were some edits that were made. Um. Mister Freitag, do you want to elaborate very quickly on to for the viewing audience what what took place?
Yes, uh, good evening, everyone. Kevin Freitag, Town Council. Um, that's right, there there are two sets of contracts here, there are um. Being proposed for the select board to review tonight. The, the only changes from the last time that the select board saw them um are. Regarding the price for Tetra Tech, the price actually went down, and just to bring it to the select board's attention, I believe you just voted one contract. And one amount, there are four contracts, and the amounts are not the same on all four contracts, so they, the select board should probably take a. A second vote to. Uh, approve the other three contracts that Tetra Tech. Uh, has with uh the town that you should have at this point. All those prices on the four contracts, they've all gone down because there were traffic study portions of those contracts. That uh needed to be removed and as a result, the overall price came down. Um, on the, the Van Ness contracts, there was. Um, there was an error in in part of the fee schedule and part of the contract that didn't reflect the current fee, so. Those fees are the same for all four contracts, it's that fifty-two fifty number that you voted, so I think you're all right on those votes. Uh, but I think you do need to go back and vote at least the remaining three Tetra. Uh, but I think you do need to go back and vote at least the remaining three Tetra Tech contracts.
Madam Chair, I'll move that we approve the three additional contracts between the town of Milton and Tetra Tech for forty B project peer review. And to authorize the town administrator to sign the three agreements.
Second.
Thank you. Um, all those in favor, Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins, yes, thank you, Mr. Freitag, for bringing that to our attention. I appreciate it. Um. Let's see, so now we're on um, item fifteen, discussion approval retiree insurance prescription drug carve-out plan. And I believe we have Paige Appolito, our um, Director of Human Resources.
Um, yes, Madam Chair, we also have Jill Galant Shaw, if we can make her a panelist as well, Hillary, thank you, there she is.
Thank you.
Hi, Jill, hi, Paige.
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Denny, thank you both for joining us, um, and for being so patient. After uh, I'm, what I'm sure is a long day. So um, it's good to see you again.
Hi, it's nice to see all of you as well, thank you for having me back. Everybody's burning the midnight oil tonight, huh?
Yes, yeah. Hello, Paige.
Hi, I'm here, thank you.
Thank you. Um, well, please um, take it away, um, this is uh, uh, an, a topic of great interest. I think to the board, so um, we're so glad you, you stuck it out and you're presenting to us.
Sure, uh, with, is up for me to, to go?
I literally just got on my computer, I was having um, issues. Well, I could hear you guys, but I couldn't get on, but Jill's gonna take it over.
Okay.
Great, um, so thanks again for having me, and uh, so today, the, the purpose of um, my presentation. Is to discuss a topic that we have touched on um, not too long ago. Um, it's looking at transitioning your retiree health plan uh, to a federally subsidized drug program. Where you uh, basically carve out the prescription drug benefits in an effort to reduce cost. Uh, so the purpose is to transition all town of Milton Medicare eligible retirees. Uh, their spouses and surviving spouses that are on both the Blue Cross Blue Shield retiree plans. And um, and any prescription drug plan. So, your questions are probably, why would we make this change? Um, and the primary reason is really to control cost. Um, this is a program that has been very popular uh, with municipalities uh, over the last few years. Uh, I would say um, there are very few municipalities in the state who have not adopted this. So at this point, uh, you are in the minority. So it is a cost savings to both the retirees and spouses, as well as to the town. And another benefit is that it really helps reduce your OPEB liability over time. And so I have some numbers for you. Um, really, the, the bottom line is that the savings for retirees. On the Managed Blue for Seniors Plan is about five hundred dollars per retiree. Uh, for the first year, and that's a, just in reduced premiums. And then for those retirees who are on the MedX three plan, they will actually save almost two thousand dollars. Um, for the first year. And so you might be thinking, what's the catch? And I know retirees are definitely thinking, what's the catch? Um, so what will change? How are we getting those savings? So this program uh, was introduced initially through President Bush, uh, the second President Bush. And uh, this is, was passed through the Medicare Part D Prescription Drug Plan. So basically, the way the plan works is the medical portion does not change. There are no interruptions to service, there's no change to their doctors or their hospitals. Or any networks of providers that they see, and there's no changes to their co-pay structures. Uh, for any medical services whatsoever. Everything stays exactly the same, and they have the same access to, that they have now. The only thing that changes is how they get their prescription drug medication. So because it's a federally subsidized program, it builds in a reduced rate. Which is about thirty percent lower than your current fully insured rate through Blue Cross Blue Shield. Uh, and then what it does in order to do that is to control cost by putting in a drug formulary. Which is a controlled list of drugs, um, prescriptions that are covered. And just as uh, employees of the town that are on your active uh, plans with Blue Cross and Harvard. You have a formulary, which is a list of covered drugs under which tiers they fall under. And then you have a corresponding copayment. So the, that same concept works with this program. This uh, Blue Medicare RX is actually the Prescription Drug Plan name. So it's a Blue Cross Blue Shield product, and uh, largely, the, the drugs that they use now. Would be continued to be covered, but instead of using the, the vendor, the Express Scripts vendor. That they have right now, it would go to another pharmacy vendor called CVS Caremark. And it works exactly the same as their current um, Express Scripts, it's really just a change in vendor. So in order to make the change, um. There are no forms that need to be filled out. The town doesn't really need to do anything, Blue Cross Blue Shield will work behind the scenes with my assistance. And with Paige's assistance, uh, but Blue Cross really does most of the heavy lifting. And it would go into effect the first of July. So the reason that we're presenting this to you now is because there is a, a little bit of a tight timeline. Uh, in order to get this going for the first of July. Uh, Blue Cross requires uh, seventy-five to ninety days in order to do all the background work. Uh, with the vendors, and so in order to do that, we would need the town to really make a decision. You know, really, before the end of February would be the most important, uh, tonight would be great. If, if you uh, are so inclined, uh, if you made that decision. But really, it's um, it's a win-win for the town and the retirees. And especially retirees who have spouses that are covered as well, because there's so much savings to be had. Um. So one other thing that you should be aware of is that once you make the decision to make this transition. I will then notify Blue Cross and we'll get the, the uh, the ball rolling. And then once everything is set up in the springtime, the retirees would then be invited to education sessions. Where we can explain to them very clearly exactly what is changing. And we'll just show them what the um, prescription drug co-pays will be, and we'll review the formulary with them. And this, of course, in the time of COVID cannot really be done in a live audience. But it certainly can be done in this format um, virtually. As well as uh, Blue Cross will set up a special uh, phone line. That can help speak with employee, or retirees one-on-one. Um, so that's something that we can absolutely implement and make sure that all retirees understand exactly what is changing. And of course, we'll be mailing them literature and, and information as well. Let's see, what else? Paige, have I forgotten anything?
Uh, just, just for instance, just so they understand um, the difference, just um, right now, if you're on Managed Blue for Seniors. You're paying one eighteen a month, it would go to, I think, eighty-four dollars a month. But, so that's, that's a big savings right there. Um, and like Jill said, everything stays the same except for the prescriptions. Which actually could be even less, it depending on which plan you have.
Yes, actually, that's a really good point, Paige. Um, for the people that are on the MedX three plan. They will transition to MedX two with a prescription drug carve-out. And the, both the per- the um, MedX plan and the Managed Blue for Seniors plan will have the exact same drug program. Uh, the PDP is what it's called. Um, and so the Blue Medicare RX will be the exact same for all retirees. So it really kind of levels the playing field, but for those people who are on MedX, the co-pays will stay exactly the same. Nothing changes as far as the amount that they're paying, just the formulary. Meaning that the drug list might change slightly, or the tier that their drug is covered under might change. Um, but it's really very, very minimal disruption. And then the other plan that actually the majority of your retirees are enrolled on is the Managed Blue for Seniors product. And as Paige mentioned, um, for, for those seniors that are using retail prescription drugs. If they're going to a retail pharmacy, uh, they're paying a percentage instead of a flat copayment. Right now, your, your current plan requires that they pay a twenty-five percent copay for a generic drug. A fifty percent co- um, co-insurance for a tier-two brand-name drug. And a seventy-five percent co-insurance for a brand-name tier-three drug. And so as I'm sure you can imagine, a percentage of anything in the retail market could potentially be very high. And there are no caps or limits to the out-of-pocket costs um, that seniors can pay on this plan. So, basically, and the drugs fluctuate because they're publicly traded. And so retail drug costs can fluctuate from month to month, um, depending on the stock market. So having a percentage can be very difficult for retirees to budget, especially if, if they're on a fixed income. So it's actually a really nice welcomed change when they go to a flat copay. And they know exactly what they're going to pay every single time they go to the pharmacy. And by the way, on this plan, there, they um, retirees can still go to any retail pharmacy that they're using now. So nothing changes with that either. The only thing that will change is the mail-order prescription drug vendor. And again, that changes from, um, it changes from Express Scripts to CVS Caremark. Okay, and then lastly, the other thing that does change for the Managed Blue for Seniors enrollees. Is the co-pays for mail-order prescriptions will go up. Slightly, so they'll go up, and I did include a comparison for you. So that the co-pays for tier-one would go from five dollars to twenty dollars. For tier-two, which is brand, it would be th- from thirty dollars to forty dollars. And from tier-three brand name, it would go from fifty to seventy. And that's for a ninety-day supply in the mail, so that the benefit will match the same as the benefits on the MedX plan. So it's, as I said, a level playing field, all retirees will have the same benefit. And then the savings that they will receive from the premium reduction can be used to pay for the increased co-pays. Should that be the case. So again, we feel like this is a very good savings option for the retirees. Five hundred dollars for the Managed Blue for Seniors, and MedX members will save almost, it'll be nineteen forty, based on the current plan. So our proposal is for you to adopt this, and it would go into effect July first. Because it's a federally subsidized program, it would then renew on a calendar year. So that means you would have a renewal every January. And so we would, we would get a renewal rate in sometime in the fall, and we'll know what the, those rates would be uh, for January first. And then after this January, it's um, a full twelve-month calendar year plan. So again, the town will save about three hundred and eighty thousand dollars in premium reductions, and that's net savings. Um, and then, of course, you're going to have more moderate rates of increase over time. Because this drug utilization is going to come way down, the cost of the medications is going to. Um, basically, reduce by thirty percent from where you are now. So it's just going to be a lot less expensive overall. So the rates of increase that the town are seeing, is seeing now, will, will definitely um, level out and be much lower over time. And again, that really does help your OPEB liability. So I feel like I've kind of talked a lot, are there any questions um, about this or about the implementation? Or about the education sessions?
Mr. Wells?
Yes, Madam Chair, so I wanna make my comments because I will have to abstain from this for, which I'm fine. But to our presenter, I, I just want to, I've mentioned this to you before. You know, our retirees are people who've given their whole life to this community. As I speak tonight, and as our meeting started, I sent a text to Mr. Denny, one of our retired police officers, who's a resident of the town. Who served this community almost four decades, as well as serving the Vietnam War, fights for his life tonight as a critical condition hospital. Um, many of these, particularly the tier-threes, and well, I, I'm. I don't know what it's like to be in this category, but I, I know enough of the retirees. Some of them, particularly the ones that need the tier-threes, they have some health issues, you know, they have some. And the one thing that I would suggest to you, because these are people, and I say this to you too, Paige, these are our employees. These are, I mean, you have employees, we have employees who never even got their retirement, that have died this year, that never even got to use this. And we have some who struggle deeply, and, and every person who works in town hall and the libraries and the cemetery, all these places. Are the people who make this town tech. So my strong suggestion to you would be to roll this out to them, they shouldn't have to hear this. I'm lucky because I'm on this board, I wouldn't know about this, and even though they're not a union, they don't have a voting right. They're the people who have the health issues that this really impacts the most. And I think that if we're going to do this, and, and you may be correct, maybe it is, maybe it is, but I'm not sure. But um, I, I would really think that, given these are the people who put us where we are. And make this town what it has been for, since its existence. I think of one person in particular who gave this town his whole life, and he's in many senior years these days. And I wish I had the opportunity to talk to him tonight and ask him, like, what do you think of this? But um, I just think that the educational part of this, you should do this beforehand, reach out to them beforehand. Don't let them read this in the Milton Times on Tues- on Thursday, or hear about it on cable. They're the people who made this town work, especially like the widows whose husbands have already died. You know how many firefighters have died of cancer? I can name both fingers that work in the spider parliament and all died of cancer-related illnesses, like. Um, I know I'm being emotional on this, but it's something that is very deep, and I can't agree to them. These are our people we're talking to. Thank you, thank you, Madam.
Um, no, I, I, I had not, not exactly the, the exact same thought. But um, I thought back to the fact that if it, you know, when it was uh, we were doing this with our employees. There were unions and um, you know, so people, people could understand it as they went along. And I was wondering how that happens in this case.
Yeah, it's, oh, I'm thinking that a lot of them are gonna be like one-on-one. If, you know, we have to just call them directly and explain what's gonna happen, which I figure, um. I mean, I do that now with, with when people come in to retire, so um. Yeah, if we can't reach a group of people, we're just gonna call them individually, and so they understand what's happening. You know, and basically, they're just gonna have a prescription card added, that nothing is going to change. They're just gonna actually have a prescription card now, so I know it's another, another form that they're gonna have to carry around with them, another card. But, you know, it will be, that's, that's all that's gonna change, that, you know, um. Plan numbers and their ID numbers, everything will stay the same, they're just gonna get a prescription card in the mail and take that with them when they go. Or if they do mail away, they'll just need that number. So, yeah, we know it's gonna be hard, that's why it's gonna probably take us the three months to get in touch with all of our retirees.
We'll definitely have multiple um, mailings and office hours. And Blue Cross Blue Shield uh, will have a special um, service line for the retirees to call individually. service line for the retirees to call individually. Um so they they have um really, it's all hands on deck, and I've done this transition probably twenty-five times with twenty-five municipalities in uh with Blue Cross Blue Shield. Um they know it like the back of their hand. They understand this population, and that change is very scary and difficult. Um so they understand that, you know, it's it's something that you can't rush through, um and you have to take your time and explain the benefits to people. Uh but really, the bottom line is that it's most retirees understand what Medicare Part D is, because for those people who are in the private sector, they have to go out and buy this privately. And um they hear it from their friends, and they know that the plan that the town is going to offer them is way better. Uh and that includes this transition is much, much better, much richer, um and gives a a lot better coverage and is less expensive than anything they could find privately out on the street. Um in fact, many people worry that they hear about a PDP or a prescription drug or a Medicare Part D plan, and they immediately worry about that donut hole or that coverage gap that is that happens um in the private sector. And I can tell you that the Blue Cross Blue Shield plan that is being offered to the town completely buys up that level of of benefit, so that there is never any gap in coverage, and in fact, is a very, very rich plan that you cannot buy anywhere. It's really just for municipalities. Um so having a lot of experiences with retirees and these products, I can tell you that at first, many are very, you know, they have anxiety and and they're a little bit concerned. Um and it's helpful if they do have a family member that can, you know, ask questions on their behalf, and and we're happy to talk to them too. Uh but for the most part, they end up thanking us at the end, because it streamlines things. They no longer have to worry about paying a percentage for something, a percentage of something they don't know. And so they can budget for it, and they can take that savings. That's real savings that they can use. Um so I think by, I would say that this benefits the majority of retirees, and it will be a very positive thing for them. And then once um the transition is done, it's it's really no no big deal, because again, it doesn't interrupt any of their medical services or their doctors or their retail pharmacy. It only changes where they order their mail prescriptions. Um and and then, like I said, the the co-pays do go up slightly for um for the people on the Managed Blue. But again, i- it's not enough to eat up the savings that they're going to achieve with the premium reduction. So it it really still ends up being a benefit to them in the long run.
Thank you. Mr. Zulus?
I I know this is retirees, but does it make sense to give a heads up to the unions on this? I'm not sure how much contact they have with the retirees, but certainly their members will
Walk out the door. You're right. They're gonna walk out the door at one point.
So I so I I asked the question, what, you know, I uh whether whether it makes sense to to give a heads up to the unions uh on this, perhaps before we vote on it.
Um that's certainly the town's choice. If you'd like to do that, it's really not the norm. Usually, it's just a decision by the select board.
Madam Chair. Jill, in Paige, thank you for a very good presentation, and I thought the written materials that Cook supplied were also very helpful. A- as I understood it, I'm not unsympathetic to the point Richard made, but my understanding of what I heard and what I've read is that while there might be an increase, there will be an increase in the co-pays for retirees for the quarterly mail prescription, the premiums are gonna be reduced pretty substantially by either five hundred dollars or one thousand nine hundred and forty dollars over the first year. And the benefits to the town are a first year, so fiscal twenty-two, cost savings of three hundred eighty thousand dollars, and a long-term reduction in our OPEB liability. So for those reasons, I think is consistent with our fiduciary duty and our need to examine, as we did last year, employee benefits for employees, um I think we need to consider this for retirees, and if this has been around since the second Bush administration, and a lot of other communities have adopted it, we probably should have considered this some time ago. So um that said, I'm gonna move that we approve the retiree plan design changes as presented tonight by Cook and Company with an effective date of July first, twenty twenty-one.
All those in favor? Ms. Conlin?
Did we get a second? I didn't hear a second.
I seconded it.
Oh, I didn't hear you.
Is that okay?
Yeah, no, I didn't hear you. Yes.
You do that. I I usually stay out of those things, but uh but I but I thought I would, because everybody's looking tired.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Doyle?
Being covered through this program by my uh wife's program, I think I should probably abstain.
Yes. Okay. Mr. Wells?
I will abstain.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Zulus?
Yes. But but I do think I do think we should the we should roll it out to the unions because it's gonna affect your membership.
Yes, sure. I can do that.
Thank you both so much.
Thank you.
Again, for all the time you you spent on this and um and for presenting it to us this evening.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Have a great night.
Thanks.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Next, we have um the regulatory agreement for the Affordable Housing Units at one ninety-nine Church Street from Pulte Homes uh Milton Woods Project.
I'm moved to approve the Regulatory Agreement and Declaration of Restricted Covenants between the Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development to Town of Milton and J and N Park Properties LLC, Pulte Homes, related to Affordable Housing Units and Units at one ninety-nine Church Street, and authorize the administrat- town administrator to sign that agreement.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, all those in favor? Ms. Conlin? Sorry. Say, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Conlin?
Yes.
Uh, Collins, yes, and I I just would like to say a special thank you to the Affordable Housing Trust um and um the Housing Committee, but especially uh Tom Callahan and Julie Kramer, who worked with DHCD um to make this happen, uh because it was not easy, and uh they came up with some solutions along with DHCD. So we thank the Department of Housing and Community Development as well. So very exciting to have these units. Uh, number seventeen, approval February twenty twenty-one Special Town Meeting Warrant, which is to go to the printer tomorrow. And I does anyone have any questions or comments?
I'm sure I still have some minor comments to send, but I don't think that's anything significant.
I'm moved to approve the warrant for the February twen- February twenty twenty-one Special Town Meeting, uh subject to some um ministerial changes.
Second.
Yeah. All those in favor? Ms. Conlin?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Collins, yes. Thank you, everyone. Next, we have a grant from Karen Cahill to the Milton Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition.
I'll move that we accept a grant in the amount of two hundred dollars from Karen Cahill to the Milton Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition.
All those in favor? Ms. Conlin?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins, yes. Thank you, Miss Cahill. I move to reappoint Alex Rosenberg of Thirty-four St. Mary's Road to the Commission on Disability through January twenty twenty-two.
Second.
All those in favor? Ms. Conlin?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins, yes, and um thank you, um, Mr. Rosenberg for serving. And I I I wonder if maybe at at some point, we could have the Committee on Disability come in and give us um a report.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I will be speaking with uh Diane DiTulio Augustino tomorrow. I will ask her.
Oh, okay. Thank you. That the recent MMA conference um uh talked a lot about um equity, and that includes um equity of all kinds and trying to be really inclusive and welcoming, and so that would be great. Thank you very much, Mr. Dennehy. I move to reappoint Mark Day to the Municipal Broadband Committee through January twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor? Ms. Conlin?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle? Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins, yes. Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Day. Okay. It's ten o'clock. Uh, we have meeting minutes um and the rest of our usual things, and then Governor Stotin, and then some executive sessions. Uh, what are 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 people okay to keep going in this vein?
Can we do the minutes en masse rather than one by one?
Second.
Yeah, but to that point, I sent over some changes to Hillary late this afternoon, and I so I'd like to withdraw until we have time to address the clarifying changes, December sixteenth and twenty-ninth and January thirteenth. So if we could take those three out, because I think we need some corrections on those.
I I I'll move to approve the minutes of September twelfth, twenty twenty, December fourth, twenty twenty, December twenty-second, twenty twenty, January fifth, twenty twenty-one, and January twentieth, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
All those in favor? Ms. Conlin?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins, yes. Okay, great. I have uh some language for one of those. So um, yes, Mr. Dennehy.
Madam Chair, just a point of order. I I do see Mr. Andrew Maloney and Mr. Roger Gray, who are here for our Governor Stotin Trustees Meeting, and I wanna thank them for their patience and just make you aware that when we do head into that, these two gentlemen, uh let Hillary know that they need to be led into the room.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dennehy.
Thank you. I know you're a very busy quarterbacking.
Well, no, it's very, it's I I really appreciate. Everybody helps me do this, and um and and I I it's great. I appreciate the team effort and um nobody being upset that I need it. So um, let's see. So our future meeting dates are February second for that Working with Forty B session. Um, February tenth, we're gonna have an in in a meeting in that intervening period between February tenth and February twenty-fourth, but we'll be scheduling that and sending out an email blast. Let's see. So uh, Mr. Dennehy, do you have a report?
Nothing to report today. Um, obviously, we just very quickly, Caroline Consella touched upon the work that's going on about vaccinations and the help that Council on Aging is providing, and I think I thanked all of our operational staffers for their work uh overnight and and through the morning hours. So, thank you.
Thank you. The words look great. Um, I do not have a report. Uh, members, do any members have reports?
Madam Chair, I don't have a report, but um since we last met, the school committee has appointed James Jett as permanent superintendent, and I just wanted to congratulate Mr. Jett on his on his permanent appointment. And now that I, you know, not being a parent, I don't have any direct involvement with him in the schools, but you're seeing his work through the Finance Committee. Um, I'm looking forward to working with him as we go through the budget year, and um uh so just a shout out to Mr. Jett, and congratulations.
Thank you. That that's great. I think we're we're uh all, if we haven't already sent him a little email, he'd probably really appreciate that. Does anyone else have? Mr. Wells?
I just have one thing. You notice I um I get passionate when I speak about our personnel. Tonight, I learned that one of our retirees, um retired police officer Paul Lynch, who's a longtime resident of the town, is critically ill in the hospital. Most people, he's been in for several weeks now, and I just ask anyone who lives and knows him, uh his nickname is Lynchy, well-known in this town, served this community for many, many years. He put on his prayers tonight. He's waging quite a battle against that disease that we are so involved in every day. So um Air Force veteran of Vietnam, just quite a kid, patrolled the Prussia Road um route almost his entire career until the day he retired. So people just keep them in their prayers tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Comment response? We don't need that. Um, I think we've been collecting future agenda items. Does anyone have anything else they'd like to add? Mr. Zulus?
One thing, Madam Chair, we we have uh we have all, uh I think, received um communications about the challenges of the schools uh during the pandemic and and how things are changing with respect to the schools. And I I wonder if it would make sense for this board to meet with the school committee to see if uh there's anything that we can do with respect to funding for, you know, addressing some of those challenges. Now, we do meet as a finance subcommittee, and Ms. Ms. Conlin has raised this this possibility uh in in finance subcommittee, but I I I wonder if if it makes sense for our our two boards to meet to see if there's anything that we can do uh in terms of funding to help out with that situation. And that would be a, I I think, a request from yourself to Chair Verola.
Um, well, I can certainly make that that request um rather than handling it in a a finance subcommittee meeting.
Madam Chither, to that point, could we, let me ask Mr. Zulus, could we at least, because like we asked Mr. Dennehy yesterday to to check in with Superintendent Jett and report back at our meeting next week, so we do have the FY twenty-one budget on the agenda for Wednesday morning. Could we maybe see how that discussion goes and then consider the joint? I I think the joint meeting is a great idea. Um, I just wondered whether we should get Mr. Dennehy and Superintendent Jett together first and and um see if we might have any progress at the next meeting.
I think that makes sense, Katie.
Yeah. Uh, I I I think I think that's great. Um, that's something that we've been trying to do um to to uh to support in in that way. And to see what progress has been made, I I think um I I would I would appreciate that. So, okay, and then we can schedule a joint meeting. Great. Thank you.
Did you do Community Happenings yet? I don't know. Did you already do that or no?
No, that's next. So take it away.
I I just wanna, I just wanna say thank you to the Falconi family. There was one truck in East Milton Square all day today that was welcomed, and that was the Boston Children's Hospital Blood Mobile returned, and people died. I was one of the lucky ones to get my arm poked for twenty minutes, and I saw a lot of residents there, and it's tough for them. It's quite a challenge for the staff of Boston Children's to collect blood um during this COVID pandemic, and yet this is the second time now in three months they've been to we to uh to this town, and I think the fourth time they've been to Milton um since a young resident, young Sherpa girl from Robin Street was diagnosed with cancer a couple of years ago. So I just wanna say, you know, usually when you hear the Falconi name, people think, oh, it's a project, but it's one of the little things that they have done now twice this year to um try and help a really acute, the need for blood is so critical. It's you don't realize it until you go in there, and it it's just so good. So I just wanted to give a shout out, because when I did leave the truck today, they did say they will be back shortly, so um they they publicize it pretty well. So I'll say thank you for having them here in our community one more time.
Thank you.
It's painless. It only takes twenty minutes. A little prick in the arm, and then it's okay.
Thank you. Um, at this time, uh, the board is going to recess, and uh the select board will recess and convene um as the trustees of the Go- Governor Stotin Trust Fund, and thank you very much, uh, Mr. Maloney and Mr. Gray for being so very patient. I'm sure that you've had long days too. And um we do appreciate your your coming. Um, and we understand that Noreen Dolan, who's the fund coordinator, had a family occasion and couldn't be with us this evening. So we we miss her, but we're so glad to have you.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair, and select board members, and Mr. Dennehy, both, uh including us in your agenda tonight. Uh, that's correct. Uh, Noreen Dolan does have a, did have a family obligation tonight, so uh Roger Gray and I will present her report and request funding from the Governor Stotin Trust uh for calendar year twenty twenty-one. We thank you for your prior support, and we thank you for your time tonight. And uh, just I guess, as uh I should mention, I'm And, uh, just, I guess, as, uh, I should mention, I'm, uh, a resident at 258 Reesdale Road, and I'll turn the, uh, microphone over to my colleague Roger Gray, who lives on Adam Street 300, if I'm correct.
That is right. Thank you, Andrew. Good evening, folks. Roger Gray, 300 Adam Street in Milton, also here part of the, uh, Martin Swift and Milton Residents Fund, um, for funding from Governor Stotin. So, uh, Andrew, do you wanna kick it off, or do you want me to, uh, go here first?
Sure. I think we could just go, uh, right to Noreen's report, Roger, if you wanna cover that.
Sure. Absolutely, yes. So Noreen was good enough back on January 21st to send a report into, um, uh, the, the, this, the trustees of the Governor Stotin Funds. Um, just a, a couple of quick highlights. The report really speaks for itself that I just wanted to highlight. Um, Noreen again is the, uh, licensed clinical social worker, uh, who's in charge of dispersment of the funds that, that Governor Stotin so generously, along with many other Milton, uh, charitable organizations donated to, to, uh, her dispersment for those in need through the Milton Residents Fund. In the past 18 months, uh, uh, Governor Stotin has donated, uh, and gifted $110,000, um, in August. It was $75,000 in then of 2019, and then back in April of, of this, uh, of 2020 was an additional $35,000 that came in. Um, that got dispersed to families and individuals in need with over 175 gifts across the town. Um, and again, as you, you, as you all, uh, well know, those go to things like educational advancement, heating assistance, um, medical emergency food, um, electricity, utility bills, summer camps for kids. A couple of things to pull out of the report too, that I just, the last two points I would say is 84% of the recipients, um, came from more than one request. Um, it might have been at first maybe for, uh, a heating coverage, and then another one for maybe emergency food that they, they were faced with. And, um, in the past 18 months, we actually saw 27 folks and, or individuals, or, or requesters, as we call them, come forward for the very first time from the Town of Milton. Um, so just a couple other statistics I thought the, 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 um, trustees would find of interest. Um, about 80% of the requests were for housing, what I would call housing needs, housing, heat, or utilities. Um, and so about $87,000 of, of, of the, uh, grants went to those events. And the other item that I thought would be of interest in, that it was in the financial reports that, that, that Noreen submitted, um, that I would respectfully submit to the trustees that, to, 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 uh, that I think you may have interest on is around COVID-related expenses specifically, uh, in the last 18 months, uh, really since, since March 17th or so of this year. Um, those expenses totaled almost $42,000 of the spend of the 110. So about, almost 38% of the dollars spent were specific for COVID. And, and about 30,000 of that was housing, about 3,800 was medical, and about 7,700 was utilities. Um, some of these were families that, for the first time, because they needed help with a mortgage payment, or they needed help with the utility bill, or they needed help getting food on the table. Um, so, um, Noreen's report after that, I think, speaks for itself, and I'll kinda leave it there unless, Andrew, was there anything else you wanted to, to add?
No. Uh, thank you, Roger. Uh, we appreciate the support we've received in the past, and we'd like to, uh, request an additional $80,000 of funding for this calendar year from the Governor Stotin Trust. It's, uh, been, uh, essential to us in the delivery of our services and the continued good works that come out of the Milton Residents Fund, including the Holiday Gift Program and, and other things. But your, uh, generosity from the Governor Stotin Trust has allowed us to expand our role in servicing, uh, probably, uh, close to 50% more families and cases than we've done previously. So it's been very important, and we think that the first people to suffer in this, uh, pandemic will be the last people to recover. So we think there's an ongoing need through 2021, and we, uh, respectfully and graciously, uh, request your continued financial assistance.
Well, thank you, Mr. Gray and Mr. Maloney. I, I think I, I have to echo the thanks, but turn it back to the Milton Residents Fund. Um, uh, this, this board and, um, and committees that, uh, that this board has appointed worked during the spring and summer to try to put in place through staff, um, in the Planning Department rental assistance and through a couple of different mechanisms. And that has turned out to be really difficult for residents to access despite the state's, um, attempts to stability and also to streamline the process to receive funds. Uh, so I do not know what would have happened to our residents had Milton Residents Fund not been there for them. Um, I, I really don't wanna think about it. You're essential to our community, and, um, and I, I believe you've both been trustees for a long time. So I, I, I thank you for your service. And Noreen, uh, just, it has been a wonderful addition, I, I, to, to my mind. She's always there to give, give an update or, um, if, if I have a referral or, or something. So, so I, I, I just can't, can't say thank you enough. And, um, I noted the same percentages, um, Mr. Gray, that you were talking about. And it's a really, um, uh, points to the need, it to my mind, to continue the level of support that we've been given. Thank you. My apologies, fellow members, for jumping in. I don't usually do that, but.
Madam Chair, I'll move that we approve a grant to the Milton Residents Fund in the amount of $80,000.
Yes, Mr. Wells?
I, I just wanna thank them both. You know, your words absolutely covered it. It was probably 25 years ago that Emily Ennis, a longtime servant of this town, first brought me, um, into First Parish to meet Sherri Doolgen, um, with a client who, for me as a young policeman who needed help that I would have had no idea where to go to. And, um, they've continued in that, in that vein, serving residents of the town through so many, um, situations that most people would never even understand if they didn't see it. Um, so I thank for that. And I think of all the things we do do on this board annually, this vote that we're about to take right now is probably one of the best ones.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Gray and Mr. Maloney, before we vote, is there anything else you'd like to say?
No, we just, uh, thank you for your support. Roger, I'll ask you to speak in a minute. Sorry for jumping. Uh, I, I just, uh, people who've gotten to know Noreen realize that she's really the heart and soul of this organization. Uh, Roger and I were up a couple of evenings before Christmas. People were, uh, sort of either late to the game with gift cards for the Holiday Gift Program and wanted to deliver tangible gifts. Somehow the idea of the gift card wasn't, uh, uh, practical for them. So they literally filled up the little link in our parish hall, and, uh, she was separating, uh, packages for families that she was planning to drive around town, uh, à la Santa Claus, a couple nights before Christmas. So Roger and I and a couple of the other, uh, trustees of the Milton Residents Fund, uh, all got little addresses and, and bags of presents. Uh, so Roger and I are just the finance guys. We've been involved for a long time. But Noreen really has done a wonderful job and gotten to know so many helpful people in the town, including people at the, at the high school and the food bank. So she's, uh, she's really great. I, we'll be happy to share your nice comments with her, uh, at our earliest convenience. Thank you. Roger?
Yeah, Andrew, I'll just close. I was gonna comment too, we're, we're blessed to have Noreen. She's a, uh, longtime Milton resident. Um, we, when we, uh, got her resume to have her fill the role several years back, uh, it was a very quick and easy decision, and she's turned out to be everything that we needed. It's worked great for her with her family situation and not having to long commute to Cambridge every mor- every morning. Um, the last item I'll leave you with is, is, is beyond the Governor Stotin Fund. It, it astounds us as the finance people and the folks who try to keep this money running, the, the generosity of the town. And there have been members who've stepped up around the holidays, and this year in particular, one member of our town who walked in with a $10,000 check for the Milton Residents Fund. Um, wanted it done anonymously, and that same family gathered gifts and, and gave them out to three different families that they, they personally sponsored. So there's just a tremendous amount of generosity in the town, and we're happy to facilitate it. So thank you for your support.
Thank you. Thank you. All those in favor, Ms. Conlin?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
This gets an absolutely.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins, yes. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
And we're here if you, if you need us.
All right, great, great. Nice to know.
We appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you. The town appreciates it. People, thank you very much.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.
Get a, boy, the great report to, um, okay, thank you, everyone. Okay, um, at this time, uh, let's see, sorry. That's good. Um, I move to enter executive session, um, as Governor Stotin trustees to consider the purchase exchange lease or value of real property, specifically the town farm property based on my belief that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the trustees, and not to return to open session to adjourn. Um, and just to let people know, um, we will then recess from Governor Stotin. Um, actually, I would think we have to adjourn and then go back to the select board meeting. It says recess, but is that correct? We would adjourn Governor Stotin because we'll be out, and then we'll go into executive session for the select board?
I think you're right.
Yes.
Okay, so, thank you, everyone.
So we have to take a vote right now? Can I step away for a second, or we have to take a vote?
We, we need to, we.
Or to go into executive?
Go into executive session. Um, I didn't know if Hillary wanted to, um, make her announcement that she usually does about attendees, but we can vote. Um, Ms. Ca- did I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Conlin?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins, yes. Okay. I think now you're clear, Richard, if you need to step away.
I'll be right.
Okay.
So just to clarify, we're not returning to the select board on TV to vote to executive, vote to enter executive session?
No.
Okay. So, members of the public, we are in.